Call to order of the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting today, Tuesday, August 17th at 4:00 PM. May I please have a roll call?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Woodrow Haye. Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Tye Penzerga.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Chairoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to Florida Statute 286-0118, the City Commission will hold a closed-door session this afternoon, starting at 4:00 to discuss pending litigation in the following case. City of Boynton Beach, Florida versus JKM BTS Capital LLC. It's pending in Palm Beach County Circuit Court. In attendance at the closed-door session will be myself, James Sheriff, Assistant City Attorney Galbatesh, Special Litigation Counsel Tom Baird, and Joanne O'Connor, City Manager and a court reporter, the Mayor, and the members of the City Commission. The closed-door session will be approximately 90 minutes, so we will be back here for the usual start of the Commission meeting by 5:30.
Thank you. Is there any further comments by the Commission? Seeing none, we will now recess for the closed-door session. Thank you very much. We have now reconvened the City Commission meeting. Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Pastor Emily Ash of the First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Press that green, the button in the middle, please.
(laughing) I'm sorry. Should I start over?
Thank you.
All-powerful God, we gather as a community in prayer. We lift up our brothers and sisters in Haiti and all those who are rushing to help them. Hear our hearts as we share in their great sadness. Strengthen us as we walk together through this pandemic, seeking protection and health for all people, especially our children and elderly. And guide our city leaders with wisdom to best serve us, serving our needs, to be the best community we can be. Creator of all that is good, hear our prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have an addition, a proclamation for Women's Equality Day, and I believe the City Manager has asked us to remove Item 6E and to move Item 6J to 7D. Is there any further additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Next informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Thank you. I have nothing to disclose at this time. Actually, I spoke to the representative from the firm that sent an LOI to purchase the open space we own next to Leisureville, but I do not recall the name of the firm off the top of my head, but I spoke to them.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference this past weekend in Orlando. It was an interesting situation where it was an opportunity to network and connect with other leaders and hear how they're addressing COVID and other things in their communities, but it was also very strange to be in a large hotel with thousands of other people. And so I tried as much as possible to maintain my social distance and stay in my room, and unfortunately, after the event, we heard that there were people who contracted the virus. And so, you know, it is still an interesting world that we live in, where we have to continue to be cautious and careful, but I did enjoy the event and a great opportunity to continue to learn and benefit from some of the information to bring back to our city. In addition to that, I also want to thank our city, our city manager, my mayor, and our fire department and police department for their support in this difficult time, and every single resident of Boynton Beach, in fact, for rallying to support the individuals who have been affected by this 7.2 magnitude earthquake in Haiti that hit in the early mornings of Saturday. Unfortunately, my family was affected by this as well. As of now, we know that there were three individuals in our family that have passed away, and we're still waiting to hear word from others, but I do thank the community of Boynton Beach who has rallied and who has been providing support. We have Fire Station 1 that's located here in downtown Boynton Beach, which is a drop-off location only for medical supplies. So if you have medical supplies or temporary shelter supplies such as tents or sheets or other things that can be used for makeshift shelter, those will be accepted there. And through our partnership with Sister Cities, Boynton Beach is a sister city for La Caie, Haiti, which is one of the main cities affected by this earthquake. And so with that partnership, we've been able to provide relief efforts and support efforts. So I do want to thank every person who's rallied and who's provided their condolences. This means a lot, not only to me, but to the Haitian community, who I feel in certain ways, we can't catch a break sometimes. It's just, it's nonstop. It's continuous, but the fact that our community continues to rally and support, it means a lot. So I just want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart, because we feel and we see your support, and it means a lot. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Penzerga?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference in Orlando. I learned a lot. It was a great experience, and I hope to bring back all of those lessons here in the city. I also want to send my condolences to your family, Commissioner, and also to all of our Haitian neighbors and friends. This is a difficult time, and as I've said to many people privately, if there's anything I can do, count me as a supporter. I will be here to support you in any way that I can. As a Filipino-American, I can relate to that sentiment of it's just one thing after another, whether it's a hurricane, or we call it a cyclone, or some sort of earthquake. It is relentless, and it makes it so difficult for people to revive economically when it's just one calamity after another. So my heart breaks for what's happening. I found out about this during the conference, and that's it for my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I too attended the Florida League of Cities Conference in Orlando on Wednesday to Saturday. Many great sessions, of course. I ditto what has already been said. I'd like to say to my fellow cohort, Commissioner Christine Romulus, that our churches are already getting together to reach out and send supplies and goods to those in need in your area, and our prayers are with you and your family and all the people who have been affected by this. What touches you should touch all of us, because we need not excuse ourselves. It could be us next. That's it.
Thank you. For myself, on August 4th, I attended the YMCA's Student Showcase and also spoke with the teachers over at Congress Middle School. On August 5th, I attended the Boynton Beach Police Department's one-year anniversary of their police station barbecue, and I emailed the Boca Chamber to see with their festival days, what does that do for the City of Boynton Beach and our residents and our schools. I have not received a reply yet. On the 10th, I attended our former Executive Director for the CRA, Michael Simon's Celebration of Service. He was with the CRA for over 13 years, and a lot of the development that we have in our downtown, he had some help with that. As for the Florida League of Cities, my issue of economic development funding was the primary issue for the Land Use and Economic Development Committee. We worked with Language and with the great help from the City of Delray Beach, looking to have a closer partnership with Enterprise Florida, Department of Economic Opportunity, and other state agencies, so that cities like ourselves can have direct access rather than going through the county commissions' priorities first and treating cities as secondary. In addition, some of the vendors that I spoke with would be Viera Mobility, speaking about their process of having speed cameras in school zones or additional red cameras where we know people are running specifically, I believe, on minor and Congress. In addition, I spoke with Blue Duck, and I've reached out to our Assistant City Manager, Andrew Mack, to get an understanding of where we were once at with the bike-sharing program. Through my connections at the Transportation Planning Agency, I spoke with representatives of Delray Beach and Lake Worth Beach to see if it is possible to have an inter-local agreement so that we can have bike-sharing and scooter-sharing in areas where transportation is an issue. Some of the sessions that I attended was the Legislative Hot Topics and met with the American Flood Coalition. On the August 13th, I attended the opening session along with the Understanding and Foster- fostering Racial Equity and the Future of Transportation. On the 14th, I attended the VJ Day, Victory Over Japan, at our Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park. And then I appreciate Commissioner Romulus for your insight and moving forward with getting support for our sister city. If you'd like to make a donation, it is boyntonssistercities.org, and the way that we are doing this is that we're requesting medical supplies first, because the food and other needs are being taken secondary. We want to make sure that we are able to treat the injured people. We have a partnership with the Gascov Clergy Foundation to use those medical equipment and the clinic Front Fred, which is just outside the city of La Caie. In addition, I did speak with the agent for Alan Spurlin, and that is it for myself. Seeing no further informational items, we will first is proposed announcements is Proposed Resolution 21-100, reaffirming the City of Boynton Beach's support of Company D, 2nd Battalion, 327th Infantry Regiment of the 101st Airborne Division, Air Assault, aka Delta Demons. First Sergeant Dustin Bell will attend our meeting virtually. So let's make sure.
Yes, sir.
He's on by telephone, Mayor.
Okay. Good afternoon. We hear you. You have the floor.
Hi, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to thank you guys all for inviting me onto this, and like I was just texting Lori, we had just, I just happened to get out of the woods. We're in the middle of Fort Benning, Georgia, right now, actually doing a training event, and I got a text message, and I was like, right on time, just like military clockwork, I guess. So I'm kind of, I'll just give you guys a little history about us and myself. First off, my name is First Sergeant Dustin Bell. I've been in the Army for almost 19 years, been on 10 combat deployments, five to Iraq, three to Afghanistan, and then I did a few with Special Operations Unit out of Fort Meade, working with some random three-letter agencies. Currently, and then throughout my career, I started at Fort Campbell, did some odds-and-ends stuff, worked with some Special Operations people, and then eventually got back to Fort Campbell and now in charge of Demon Company 2327 Infantry. Little bit about what we have been doing and what we're going through. Over the past year, since I've been the senior non-commission officer of the company, we have been doing multiple things, mostly just being ready to deploy at a moment's notice, as you guys all see with the Kabul stuff going on. We have one brigade out of the 82nd Airborne Division that has gone over to Kuwait to help secure the embassy and any kind of critical infrastructure to help regain any kind of positions in Afghanistan. So we are noting all of our training and assets, or in that facet, to ensure that we are protecting the people, not only of the United States, but of Afghanistan as well. Currently, so we drove from Fort Campbell, Kentucky, down through Nashville, down through Birmingham, in our up-armored Humvees, down to Fort Benning, Georgia, which is amazing if you've ever driven through Nashville or Birmingham, Alabama. People like to test their faith and confidence in a Nissan Sentra versus an up-armored military vehicle, so it was a little nerve-wracking, but we made it here. Now we're conducting one of our annual training requirements of mounted machine gun gunnery, just to ensure that we are proficient and ready to deploy at a moment's notice. Lori had asked me to give you guys a little bit of an insight of how the Demon Company got our name. So historically, I don't know how many prior service members you have in the room, so I apologize if it gets a little redundant, you guys are already understanding this, but for the non-military, prior military service in the room, each of the companies are labeled, you know, in a battalion, there's six companies in a battalion, and the easiest way to label them is just A, B, C, D, F, and H. So with Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, FSC, and then an HHC, which is the Headquarters Company, but for Alpha through Delta, we're the combat companies. So with a Delta company, it used to be a lot more vulgar than what it is now, so we try to keep it as politically correct as possible, so we've changed it to some pretty vulgar infantry stuff, and we've kind of turned it into the Demon Company, just because we want to make sure, as an infantry company, our main mission is to protect, lay down fires, and make sure that the enemy sees demons as we find, fix, and finish. So that's a little background about myself, a little background of the company. I just want to, you know, extend my excitement on being able to come down over the September 11th weekend. I've linked in with, I don't have my notes here in front of me, but I believe his name is Jim. We're going to do some honor guard, some color guard stuff for him on the September 11th stuff, do some beach cleanup, hopefully try to hit up the school and talk to you guys on the 10th, if you guys are available, and then see what we can do to help rekindle this relationship between us, as Boynton Beach has done so much for us during the previous deployments. So pending your questions or comments, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you so much, First Sergeant. You know, the big thing that, you know, is my concern is that, Boynton Beach, we have our mental health committee, and so we want to make sure that all of your battalion or regiment knows that we are here for them. So, you know, we look forward to seeing you in two weeks, and let us know what we can do for you, and so that we can hopefully make sure that you guys are ready to fight for the United States.
Yes, sir. We greatly appreciate it. Like I told Lori, you guys have given so much for us and the previous command teams, and we just want to make sure that we start giving back to you all as well. So anything you all need from us, we're definitely here. We want to try to show our support to the community, and especially to Boynton Beach as a whole. So anything you guys can do for, anything you guys need us to do, if it's help with the Haiti mission that you guys are working with there, we can definitely try to pool up some medical supplies or any kind of shelter stuff and try to get it down to you guys when we drive down on the 9th and 10th.
Oh, that's amazing. We do appreciate it for helping our sister city.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So because this is a resolution, I do need a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, First Sergeant, we look forward to seeing you in a couple weeks.
Thank you once again, ladies and gentlemen. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to fall off from here. I got to make sure guys didn't lose any weapons out in the woods today, so I greatly appreciate it, and thank you so much for your time.
Take care. Our next announcement is recognition of Jeff and Chris Harden with Straticon Construction for the Adaptive Reuse and Renovation of the Boynton Beach Arts and Cultural Center.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Jeff and Chris to come up. They, we have something to give them, and I'd like to step down with you, Mayor, if we can. We had a dedication ceremony, it was probably a month or two ago, where we wanted to acknowledge Straticon for their outstanding work. They were the contractor that did the adaptive reuse and renovation of our old high school across the street. As I've gotten to know Jeff and Chris, I know this was a passion of both of theirs. Their passion was tested. They ran into some pretty unanticipated things throughout the construction of the high school, but at the end of the day, the entire town square team pulled together, and that building, as you know, is just absolutely amazing, and we wanted to take the opportunity publicly, Jeff and Chris, to say thank you. You went above and beyond, there is no doubt about it. I know, I was hoping Mark was here tonight, but I think he and Kelly had to go back up to Orlando, but to just make a few comments about the challenges that they ran into that were unanticipated with an old building, and a historic building. So the end of the day, every problem was worked out. We have a stunning facility, and we have a little gift to present to you that I'm going to ask the Mayor to, I don't know, Eleanor is it down there? To say thank you. When we had the dedication of the building, Jeff and Chris have a new driver, teenager in their family, who had a little fender bender that evening, so they literally couldn't come. They were managing that, everybody was safe and okay, but that's why we wanted to make sure we had the chance tonight to formally say thank you.
Thanks, Lori, and Commission, and the City of Boynton Beach. Definitely was a labor of love. I remember maybe six or seven years ago coming to Commission and talking about saving that high school. So for that to become a reality and to be part of it, it really was something that means a lot to us and will be part of our legacy, and we're proud to be part of Boynton Beach. So thanks so much for your support, and hopefully it goes to great use and continues to be an asset for the community. So thank you very much.
Jeff, I think, oh, they're doing the picture. Let him take the picture. It's fine. I just want to say just a little history lesson, and maybe speaking for myself, but I think my other Commissioners up here can agree with me. When we first ran for office, this was kind of like the unifying issue that I believe really kind of, really was the impetus for change for what ultimately became our downtown and this entire project, and this building, very building, and everything that you all see, the new police station, fire station, and all that. It was really the consensus that we must save that high school, and so we went on this journey of, okay, what do we have to do to save this high school? And, you know, lots of hazmat suits and visits later, we ultimately did that. And so the fact that we can all walk into that building hazmat suitless and safe, and really just, it's a stupendous building. It's phenomenal, and, you know, we have all types of programs in there and events in there. It's fantastic. So the fact that you allowed for something that once was trash and bulldozable, if that's a word, in the eyes of others, I know it's not, but I'll go with it. I like to make up words, y'all know this about me, but I like seeing it in the caption, too. The fact that you all made a building that once others saw as trash into the jewel that it is today is just commendable. So I do want to say thank you for that, because I think it's a beautiful thing that we now have a piece of our history in downtown that has been renewed and remade. So thank you, and this will be a legacy that continues to sustain, be sustained in Boynton Beach. Thank you.
The building has won two awards already for the historic preservation efforts. There you go.
Please, Mayor.
I'd like to say to Jeff and Chris that job well done. I ditto everything Commissioner Romulus just said. I'd just like to share with you, back in 2007, when I first made my first pass at this, this is my second go around, the vote came up to a 2-2 split, and guess who had the final vote? Yours truly, and I voted to preserve it. You guys have come along, and this Commission and others who came after me have made a dream come true. It looks nothing like it used to look, let me tell you. You guys made, as she said, this dream of ours a reality, and I just want to let you know that just keep up the good works, and Boynton Beach thanks you for the job that you've done. Thank you.
My story is, is that I remember being at the old City Hall at that 3-2 vote to tear it down, and that was after your time. And with Rick Gonzalez of REG Architects pleading to get it, to give him a chance to save it, and then bringing you along, and I'm hearing what you're saying, I remember your first pitch saying that it's not going to cost the city that much money, that you're going to be able to find a way to make it work, and I truly appreciate that, because that was one of the things that made me want to run for Mayor, was preserving that building. And to see the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation give us the outstanding achievement for adaptive reuse, I think is truly remarkable throughout the state of Florida. So thank you again for making, keeping history alive and keeping the soul of Boynton Beach There's no further comments. We will move on to Announcement C. The City Commission Meeting, originally scheduled for Tuesday, September 7, 2021, will be held on Wednesday, September 8, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Budget hearings to adopt the fiscal year 2021-22 budget hearings will be held during the City Commission Meetings on Wednesday, September 8, 2021, at 5:30 PM, and Tuesday, September, excuse me, 21st, 2021, at 5:30 PM, in the City Commission Chambers. Our next announcement is by Chelsea Sanabia, Marketing Events Coordinator, regarding the 2021 I Have a Dream event.
Is it on? Okay. Hi, Chelsea Sanabia, Marketing and Events Coordinator here at the City. In December of 2020, the MLK Committee postponed the city's annual Outdoor Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, traditionally held on MLK Day at Sarah Sims Park. The Committee discussed and created a new event to mark the anniversary of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s iconic "I Have a Dream" speech. The "I Have a Dream" event will be held on Saturday, August 28, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, at Centennial Park and Amphitheater in downtown Boynton. A new component of this year's event is an MLK Student Showcase that includes creative artworks, expressions of a mojo. The student artwork will be displayed for two weeks at the Arts and Cultural Center, with an opening reception on Friday, August 27, from 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. The "I Have a Dream" event will also include music and performances, children's activities, food vendors, Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccines, and more. We invite everybody to attend this free community event. Complimentary parking is available within Town Square, at the parking lot, east of the Schoolhouse Children's Museum, and the corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest Boulevard. and the corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest Boulevard. Accessible parking is available. In addition, free transportation will be provided from Sarah Sims Park. East Ocean Avenue and First Avenue will be closed. We wanna thank all of the community members who have been part of the MLK Committee for the last nine months. On the day of the event, dozens of volunteers will be needed. Please visit boynton-beach.org backslash dream for more information.
That was Chelsea's first time ever addressing the commission.
She left too soon. Questions?
She's too nervous.
Get me out of here.
That's alright.
Chelsea, you did great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Good job.
And so it's, it starts on Friday?
Friday will be the student showcase at the Arts and Cultural Center from 5:30 to 6:30.
And then at 12 o'clock on Saturday?
Yes, 12 to 4 on Saturday.
Okay, thank you so much. I look forward to seeing it and we have wonderful partners. I'm excited. This was, was it 2020? We were able to have the, the first MLK Day event over at Sarah Sims. It's gonna be, I think, even better now with our new town square to make sure that everyone from the city feels comfortable coming and is excited to have it in our new, to showcase our new downtown.
Everybody thinks we bite. We don't bite. Not hard anyway.
That was one of the other commissioners. Okay, and the last announcement is the, the proclamation for Women's Equality Day. I believe we have Angela Cruz here to accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas in 1848, five trailblazing women organized the Seneca Falls Convention and created the Declaration of Sentiments, a platform that called on women to fight for their constitutionally guaranteed right to equality as US citizens. And whereas at the 1851 Women's Right Convention, Sojourner Truth delivered one of the most famous women's rights speeches, Ain't I A Woman? Calling for black women to be included in women's suffrage. And in 1865, Truth worked at the Freedoms Village in Arlington Heights. And whereas in 1920, Gertrude Crocker, one of the 12 women who participated in the first ever picket protest outside the White House and a noted suffragist and treasurer for the National Women's Party moved to Arlington, became active in civic affairs. And whereas the fight for women's suffrage lasted more than 72 years with women from all walks of life demanding the right to voice their opinions at the polls. Yet the ratification of the 19th Amendment in the 1920 ensured primarily white women could vote and it would be another 45 years before women of color had the legal protections to vote through the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And whereas in 2020, the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, women all of all backgrounds are not only voting, but they are also running for and winning elective office in unprecedented numbers, including the highest office in the country. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, on behalf of the city commission to hereby proclaim August 26th, 2021 as Women's Equality Day in the city of Boynton Beach and encourage residents to follow in the footsteps of these great suffragists, female leaders and civic right, civil rights leaders and to continue to be sentinels for democracy and justice.
Amen.
Good afternoon. I accept this proclam, can you hear me?
Mark.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Base of the mic.
It's on.
Okay.
I accept this proclamation on behalf of the legal women voters. Thank you to the city commissioner and mayor for recognizing 101 years of women having the right to vote. Women's Equality Day commemorates the 1920 adoption of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which prohibits states and the federal government from denying the right to vote to citizens based on gender. I wanna give a special recognition to Commissioner Romulus, our city manager and city clerk for your leadership and your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to a three-minute presentation. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
And Mayor Grant, if I may, the options to participate for anybody using the GoToWebinar interface have been enabled. You can request to speak by raising your hand in the GoToWebinar interface and I will unmute you at the appropriate time. Or you can type your question into the questions section and it will be addressed also at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Now, does anyone from the audience would like to speak? Any public comments?
Come up to the mic.
Timer should be right there.
Right there? In three minutes? Three minutes, okay. Ernest Mignoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach. I wanted to make this presentation, especially after the tragedy of June 24th, Surfside. Everybody follows that incredibly. But what I'd like to point out is, for those involved, I guess like myself, or maybe some of you, homeowners, realtors, contractors, developers, city officials, et cetera. When you look at the aftermath and what went on, I think it's the beginning of a time where we all have to learn from what happened there. And one of the concerns is the 44-year relationship between the municipality, the building, the developer, the town, the departments, the board, the association lawyers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't think I have to explain how there were breakdowns in all areas. And further, I'd like to say, from Boynton Beach point of view, that there's only two counties in Florida that require 40-year recertification for buildings like that. And that's Dade and Broward. All the other counties don't require a recertification, including Palm Beach County, which we're hoping that counties around the state will work to get that. Whether it's a 20-year recertification, 30, 40, 50, whatever, it's needed in, in Boynton Beach. So my point is about a building that I bought in, it's 42 years old. It's right on the intercoastal. It constantly floods from the salt water. It's got some issues with the roof and walls. It takes in salt water, salt air. And then post 624, it's, you, you start to think about, well, I wonder how structurally sound our building is. And there's only two ways to find out how your building is. And that is, you need what's known as a reserve study, which is done by a lawyer and accountant, and you need an engineer to work with them. And what they do, they go back with the city and the association into the history of the building and they find everything out. Have you been putting enough money away to make repairs? Have you been making repairs? Have you gotten building permits? When was the last time you did a reserve study, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? All the things that went wrong with Surfside building. So what I'm asking the city to do is, since I'm sending a lot of emails to the city and I'm not getting any answers, I'd, I'd like a little help with the building where I own. It's a condo. It's got 28 units there and we need some help. And there's some obvious problems and that's why I spoke tonight. Thank you.
So I wanna appreciate you coming here and letting us know. You know, part of the, the aspect of associations is that you have the, the board of directors. And so it's kind of in the senses that you have legal rights as a member in that association, but it's only the board of directors that can act on behalf of that association. So I'll let our city manager speak a little bit more about what we're gonna, what we're able to do to, as you as a member of that association.
Thank you, Mayor. How do you, is it Mr. M. Golley?
Mignoli.
Mignoli. Thank you.
I may have emailed you.
Yes, you have. And, and I've been in communication with our development director who, we've had some communications with you, with our building official. And what Mr. Temple has advised, that the HOA, the, let's see, been cited by the building and code and the HOA, we've, we've cited, we've been out, we've inspected. Our building official has requested a structural report for some areas. I, you know, I asked our development director, is there imminent danger? And the determination is no, but you have some things that do need to get fixed and are, we're, we're moving along in the appropriate process to get them addressed. So I don't know, are, were you aware that we did cite and the HOA has been in communications with our building department?
Yes, I am, but you put up a notice and they just tore it down. And they're refusing to respond to any requests of us for what the citations were. So the kinda board is doing their own thing. They won't really communicate with members. That's why I came tonight. But what's most concerning is we're coming up to King Tide and our building floods every King Tide. So we have September, October, November and December. And you've got 6, 8, 10 inches of water goes in our foundation. And that's what relates to 624. You got a 42-year-old building there that floods many times during the year. You know, the bulkhead. So all I was asking from the city is that you come in and you write all the violations you see, which will force them to have to get a reserve study and an engineering report. And then we'll know structurally where we stand. So I appreciate everything you're doing and, and I think you're responding to the emails I sent, so.
And, and anything that we've cited and so forth is public record. So if you would like a, we, we can share that. We can share that, certainly share that with you. It's nothing that's private or confidential. So if you wanna shoot me a note tomorrow, we'll pull that information together.
I will, especially since King Tide's coming up starting soon. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
John, do you see anyone online with their hand raised?
At this moment, I do not. I thought I had saw one earlier, but they must have lowered that.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will now close public audience and move on to administrative. First is approve the request of Vice Mayor Hayes to distribute $1,450 of his community support funds to the Boynton Beach Bulldogs football team.
Second?
My question is, is that have they given us a schedule of their games, both for the, the team and the cheerleaders?
I have one. I'm not sure if the city has one.
Casey probably does. I don't, I don't get a copy of it.
I can get a copy of that schedule. I'd like to attend, but I don't know when the games are.
Okay.
Is there big, grand opening this week? Vice Mayor, did you remember? Do you know what date that is?
No, they're playing the biggest game of the season, which is Delray Beach Rocks. And they're, I believe that's the Thursday or Saturday, I think.
Is it this week?
Yeah.
Cause I, I think another commissioner was asking me. I'll, I'll, I'll get the scheduled out to you first thing in the morning. Cause it's.
And, and basically what I said was, I just wanted to recommend that we also, if, if possible, I know there's a high demand for it, but if we could get the vaccination bus onsite with so many families and, and kids, this would be a great opportunity to do that.
That would be a good idea. Great idea.
It will be at our MLK Day event. We'll make a call tomorrow, but I have a feeling it's too, it's, it's in high demand and maybe too short notice. But we'll certainly ask that it will definitely be here. We planned that about a month and a half ago to have it here for the MLK I Have A Dream event.
Excellent. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Second item is appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. And so we have a new advisory board, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And we only have one person applying, the London Nelson, the real estate professional, which would be under Vice Mayor Hayes.
Yes, I would like to appoint London Nelson to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee in the position of the real estate professional.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Saying no further comments. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a question about that board. Are we gonna wait until we fill up all those seats until we activate that board or how does that work?
I think until it gets a quorum. Well, no. And we are actively marketing that. In fact, I, I missed a meeting, but I know Steph Mara, I don't know if you have a minute? Cause I, we're, we did talk about how we're getting, you know, how to really get the word out, cause these are very specific disciplines to recruit people. We ask you to please, if you have any ideas of individuals that you just email me or Candace and we'll reach out to them and see if they're interested in serving.
If I can get a, a printed list, it would help me know.
Yeah, remember, I'll sign it too tomorrow.
That green light on? The green lights on?
I know. I'm not loud enough. Anyways, we have met with marketing, we're reaching out to members of the previous board that was implemented back in 2011 just to see some interest and then marketing is going to do a campaign and send out.
Since, since we're still here, can I get a printed list? I don't want an email. I want a printed list.
Can I put it in your mailbox? Or you mean right tonight?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, someone could.
Thank you.
Pull it up. Thanks.
You. And that is it for the applicants. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item for consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to pull item 6E and F. No, F and G.
Okay. So item 6F, authorize the finance department to reduce the allowance for uncollectible accounts and the account receivable accounts for utility and residential solid waste by $92,545.58. This amount consists of unpaid utility and solid waste billings, miscellaneous charges, taxes, under adjustments that have been in collections from fiscal year 17, 18 and fiscal year 18 to 19.
Yes, ma'am. I'm having this from Paul just for the general public information to explain just what's going on a little more in detail and to let people know that the, the dollars are not totally lost if they plan to do business in the, in the city in the future. So just, that applies to F and G. So if you would.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Mara Broderickson, Director of Financial Services. These, both of these items are write-offs of accounts that we have already sitting in our uncollectible balances as well. So the effect on the financial statements has none. One thing I'd love to commend staff on is you'll notice the last several write-offs have been in the neighborhood of $167,000 on item F and $238,000 on item G. This write-off for item G is only $44,000. So they've reduced their percent of their write-off from .267 to .193. And the same thing with the utility write-offs on item F as well. So they reduced it between, it was .01. It's even less than .01 now as far as the write-offs go. And yes, as those residents or users would come back into the city to use those services, we would still collect those.
And I would like to, to state that the success of this program is just phenomenal. I believe in the past, a few years ago, it used to be over a million roughly. And now it's down to, what do you say, 100,000 something?
Yeah.
The water, our water receivables.
Absolutely, yeah.
10 years ago were very hot.
Yeah, if you go back to 11, 12, it was 755,000. Yeah.
And that is the adoption of, if you recall, it's probably been two years now that we did the customer service policy and the commission adopted. So we don't allow people to get too far behind where they get to where they're so far behind that they can't afford to ever catch up. And so our, our turnoff policy, our payment policies, all of those are a little more, you know, address the problem sooner than when we used to. And it's keeping people from getting into default and getting, you know, all of a sudden they have a $1,500 water bill, uh, cause we've allowed them to just. And it's keeping people from getting into default and getting, you know, all of a sudden they have a $1,500 water bill, uh, cause we've allowed them to just go on too long. So we, 30, 60 days were addressing the, the past due balances and it has just been remarkable in, in reducing our uncollected debt and helping people not get themselves in bad situations that they just can't get out of. So it's worked both ways, you know, for both sides. It's been great.
Okay. Right. While we're on the subject, um, I know we had some residents who suffered, of course, some financial difficulties during the pandemic. Uh, have we supported or, you know, provided assistance and everything for those people? We have. So there were a couple of different options for them during, um, that time period. So our utility department did work with the customers and setting up payment plans for those, um, that needed just additional time. We didn't do shut offs for a certain amount of time. In addition, um, we use some of the CDBG money also to help them with their, um, late payments as well. So we had options.
Okay. Thank you. Unable to help. We were able to refer them to Palm Beach County, uh, if they did meet certain criteria for our HUD funding with the CDBG. So. And we'll continue to do so with our ARP money as well. We're able to continue to do that.
Thanks, Mara.
Thanks.
So I may have a motion to approve items six F and six G.
So move.
Saying no further discussion. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases of over 100,000. Would anyone like to pull an item?
Seven B, Mayor.
In addition, I'd like to, to pull the, the item from six J that we put to seven D. Approve utilizing City Boca Raton, Florida bid with Waterfield Florida Staffing doing business as staffing connections for school crossing guard service and issuing a purchase order for an estimated cost of $368,000. The City of Boca Raton's procurement process satisfied the city's competitive bid requirements.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this item is really just broadly the topic of our school, uh, crossing guard service. And, you know, thinking back to the past, I've had multiple conversations with residents and some of them have expressed concerns about not having enough crossing guards in certain location. And so I just wanted to ask, uh, staff or, or chief here, you know, what is the process to identify the locations in which, uh, these crossing guards would be needed, right? I want to make sure that we're being proactive on that and not just waiting for someone to complain because by then it, the situation could have been, um, much worse. And for example, um, in my, in my area, I remember a teacher was doubling as a crossing guard. Um, so is there, what is the process to identify these locations? Are we reviewing the crossing guards to make sure, uh, that there is still the volume of students and so forth?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Michael Gregory, Police Chief. Uh, it, it's not as simple as it should be, I would think. Uh, however, we do work with the school board regarding to, with regarding to the locations of the school crossing guards and where the bus stop locations are at as well. Uh, there is though a requirement that they have a, um, a particular crosswalk and lighting for the guards to work with safely. Uh, they've, they've determined in the past that it's unsafe for them to just set up at any location. So I believe the last one that we created was at Rolling Green Elementary School. They wanted an additional crossing guard there because the students were traveling from another path. However, that was delayed until the school district could install the, uh, striping on the street and the, uh, flash light, which allows the crossing guard to be able to manage the traffic in a safe manner. So though, we coordinate very closely with the school district and the school principals to make sure they have their capital requests in for that construction type work to be done. And then we put in our, our additional funding request for the, uh, amendments to the contract to add crossing guards to different locations.
So what I'm hearing, Chief, is that usually we wait on someone from the school district.
The school district, uh, tells us where they, uh, or the school district or the principals tell us about the traffic, the, the patterns and the bus stop locations. So we get that from them. Uh, we alternatively do, uh, sometimes get concerns from residents, but that's less than, uh, that's usually fewer and far between.
Okay.
It's mostly the information we get, the requests that we get are typically from the principals and the school district, and that's driven by bus stop movement.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. I'm, I, you, you told me that there's a lag because of getting the costs and, and getting that done, the crosswalks. Um, but there are places, if I recall correctly, um, this is information that's been relayed to me from residents that there is no crosswalk and the kids are, are going across. Um, and it does pose a, oppose a hazard. Um, so I'm hoping that perhaps in the near future, there could be a process that's just more expeditious than this. Um, but, uh, as I get those concerns, I'm, I will forward them to you.
Please.
As I get them. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, question. Um, would I be correct in classifying this as an, uh, unfunded mandate? What I mean by that is that, uh, the city pays for, um, these school, uh, crossing guards. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So in essence, the, the school district is dictating to us where to put one. We may run out of funds to pay for this particular service. So how is that fair? Uh, I mean, I'm not, you know, putting you on the spot, but it just seems to me that, uh, we should have some say so if we paying the bill. Uh, am I in love here, Lori?
No, we were just chatting a little bit and I don't know how far back and Chief, you probably, you weren't here then. Um, but when the school district used to actually pay for the crossing guards and I was just asking Jim if he remembers, it's been quite some time that when that got, that expense got transferred over, uh, to the municipalities to start paying for it. And, um, you know, I just don't, I don't have that immediate history, but we, I don't, do you know?
I don't know when it got turned over. Yeah, since I've been here, it's always been in the police department budget and we funded the contracts for the crossing guards. The, um, only thing I'll say is in the last three years, there hasn't been a lot of, of spikes, you might say, in the pricing. It's usually within a couple thousand dollars of what it was based on, uh, the school requests. The schools that are here typically been here and they don't change the routes that much. So the contract hasn't had to change significantly in how much we pay.
Ultimately, it's our approval, subject to our approval to place a guard, if we're, to pay for it and place it. So, you know, with, working with the, with the principals or the school contacts, at the end of the day, it is our decision whether or not public safety thinks it's, you know, it's, it's a need.
Chief, just one more follow-up question. Let's say next month or some period of time, we discover we needed three or four more crossing guards, some number. Does this contract allow us that flexibility or is this already a set number of crossing guards and we're fixed? How does this work?
No, we were allowed to increase it, um, up to the amount that we have obviously on the purchase order. And then we need to amend that, bring it back to the board and get approval to increase it to a certain.
Great. So I just want to make sure that the purchase order is actually greater than current needs. So we have some flexibility. Thank you.
Yes, it is.
And do we have the student counts? So I know for, you know, I used to go through, was at Boynton Beach Boulevard in Sea Crest. You know, it could be for Galaxy, could be for Point Sienna. Um, and so that's kind of where I want to know is that, do we understand that what's the anticipated number of students that are crossing? Because we, we don't want to have a crossing guard where there's no students crossing.
Oh, correct. No, we do, we actually, uh, we actually do monitor that as well, the traffic. And it goes out periodically, randomly, uh, and does site inspections, wanting to make sure that they are on scene, onsite and that they are there, uh, at the, uh, end of the school day and the beginning of the school day. Being compliant that we're paying them for services rendered. Uh, so we do verify that amount. As far as the actual numbers expected to cross a certain street, I don't believe we have that, that statistic. But the school board knows how many students are on the buses that they release at certain sites, at certain stops.
Um, so I guess that would be my request is that, you know, let's see about how many students are actually walking. Um, and, you know, one of the reasons why I don't think we have more students walking is because of the safety of the roads. You know, you know, in our residential neighborhoods, um, I'm talking about, uh, Galaxy, there's not enough sidewalks. Um, you know, the, the crossing areas. And so that's, that's something that we want to make sure that we have the, the bike lanes or the shared use paths. So that the, you know, the, the term is eight to 80, that everyone should be comfortable riding bicycles within the city. So that's kind of where I'd like to see if we can't get a map of where the crossing guards are and so that we can plan for that vision zero so that nobody, uh, so that we can have more people walking and biking in the city and not have to run the risk of more people being hit by cars.
I'll get that to you.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the item six J from that we are discussing now at seven D. Approve a change task order with Gentile Glass Holloway O'Mahoney and Associates in the amount of $144,374 in accordance with the RFQ General Consulting Services Contract awarded by the City Commission on August 7, 2018 to design a pedestrian crossing a federal highway from the senior center to the historic women's club of Boynton Beach and design the senior center parking lot. So I got, saw the, the brief estimate. It seems that we're gonna get 83 parking spaces for the, the women's club and the, the senior center combined.
Correct. Yeah, I've got 79 as, as my total.
Okay. Maybe it's, I had trouble seeing the numbers then.
Yeah, they're pretty cramped when you're trying to count them from an area.
Yeah, it was, uh, 20, um, was it 28 and?
Uh, well, excuse me, allow me to introduce myself. I'm Gary Denmeyer, I'm from Public Works Director. And so right now there's 19 parking spaces in front of the women's club.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the, the numbers that I have are 20, 35 and, uh, 28, according to the, the backup.
Okay. Yeah, cause there are three different parking spaces and, and right, and some of them could be handicapped.
And so for this crossing intersection, I know that it's a F dot road.
Yes, sir.
And so have they given us any written approval?
So we had the consultants in this preliminary sketch, uh, do a drawing that they would approve. So they went in and they met with them and they did give us an approval. It is not in writing.
Okay. So we have a verbal approval to move forward. Um, you know, my concern is that we want to make sure that we're not spending all this money and then F dot changes their mind, uh, later. Uh, and so that's kind of where after we approve this, can we send, uh, the message to F dot that we approved this? If they have any questions or comments before we move forward with spending $144,000 that they tell us now rather than right before we want to start this. And would there be, uh, a flashing, uh, sign or would there be a, what are type of the, the safety features that are going to be here for this crossing?
Yeah, it's, there, there will be beacons mounted to a, to a mast arm. And so what will happen is a pedestrian would walk up to the, to the mast arm, press a button and then it would, uh, stop traffic and then they would be allowed to cross.
Stop traffic with a red light or with a flashing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's, uh, that's what I, I like to hear because sometimes people miss the, the, the flashers that pedestrians are crossing. And so that if we're getting a, a red stoplight similar to what we have just south of Wilbright on federal highway, I'm much happier. And so does this change the, the crossing that is in between this one and on, uh, Wilbright?
No, this is independent.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So there will still be another crossing.
Yes, sir.
Just north of, I think, southeast 10th Avenue.
Yeah, I.
Or just south of southeast 10th Avenue.
Right. I don't, I don't see it in my, my mind's eye, but it's not going to impact what's existing.
Okay.
Nothing goes away because we're getting this added.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
A move. Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Those ordinance 21 dash 024.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida establishing qualifying dates for the general, general municipal elections, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
No move.
Second.
Yep, we need a roll call. Yes. Um, my, my only question is, is that, um, Crystal, will you be, be providing us with an update of the, the polling locations? Um, with the direction that we should not try to have them in any schools?
Yes, I will be providing the commission with the polling locations for your approval.
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
Will we be able to maintain the same number of polling stations in alternative locations?
I'll have to work that out with the supervisor of elections and report back to you.
Okay. Thank you. That would, that would be my request that if, say we were removing five schools as locations, that we would find five locations to replace each of those.
I'd like to, to check the numbers, cause I know that sometimes, uh, what is it, Congress Middle School and Crosspoint? I spoke with those principals and they received less than 100 or 200 walk-ins. So throughout the day. So, uh, you know, I would want to make sure that there's, uh, we look at the previous polling numbers, cause I believe we can do that at, uh, the 2020 or the, in the 2019, um, polling locations, cause those were only municipals to help us make the determination if we need a new polling location or if we can double up.
Okay. And our supervisor of elections, um, is available to come speak to the commission about, um, if you're interested in knowing what the procedures are put in place for precautionary, um, polling location, COVID, um, what they're putting in place to.
But what I would like is that I know in the past, the city, uh, the supervisor of elections has given us a test, um, ballot or something so that people are familiar with what, how to fill it out because it is multiple bubbles filled in versus the, the connecting the arrows as in years past. So, uh, what I would like is yes, for the, the supervisor elections to come to the city commission and if possible to have a, uh, a test, a testing, um, ballot. So with, uh, her office at one of our events before the election, so that if people are unfamiliar with how to vote, that the supervisor of elections can tell them correctly how to vote and that they can review the language that is attached to them beforehand. So this is before the, the sample ballots go out.
Okay.
Uh, I'll ask the, the commission, is that something that you're, you would agree to?
So to clarify, you're asking for the supervisor of elections or a member, representative of her, um, organization to come to one of our events and do this?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine.
I am, um, planning for having the supervisor trying to come for our October 5th meeting. Um, and I will see if she can bring some information about that as well at that time.
Perfect. Yeah, I'd like to see if we could double up with either, uh, movies or music on the, the Fridays.
Okay.
All right. Is there any further comments for this item? Is there any for the, the general public? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Katz? Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Bodas 5-0.
Thank you. City managers report consider use of the ARPA funds up to $500,000 for participation in a public auction of 35 Cherry Hill lots owned by the Palm Beach County Housing Authority. Further consideration, adoption of an ILA with the BBCRA to provide the funding to assist with the acquisition of said properties.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you know, for years and, and you were a great assist with us and working with the housing authority to, um, make some movement on the, the numerous lots that sit vacant in our Cherry Hill area, probably over, at least over 20 years now. And, um, we've had the opportunity and, and they've been great to work with to, uh, move forward and their board decided to go ahead and, uh, seek approval from HUD to, the term is dispose of, uh, these properties and it's a, a very extensive application. Um, we assisted them in getting it, uh, through to HUD and they did receive approval from HUD to do, to dispose of the, of the land. So, um, that's four years of work in the making. So we are very excited to be where we are. The disposition. The disposition method or disposal method they've chosen is to place these properties up for auction and. Be sold by auction. So, um, the CRA and city, you know, we anticipate obviously participating in that auction. As a refresher, the CRA has funded a half a million dollars in their budget to, um, the board has to. Utilize toward the acquisition of the properties. The CRA did get appraisal of the properties and it's roughly a little over nine hundred thousand and for all of them. So we are, we are seeking your, you know, wanted to talk to you tonight, no actual action tonight. If if it's a yay or nay, we'll move forward and bring back to you and and inter local agreement. But to earmark utilize possibly utilize some of our ARP funding to allow us to get as many of those lots as possible. Um, in participating in the auction. We did seek eligibility approval or approval opinion from the the treasury and the ARP funds can be used to acquire the land. Uh, as long as it's utilized for affordable housing. So we would likely and Jim and I will work through what we need to do to make sure we we maintain that eligibility that is possibly, you know. Property may be deed restricted or not, but, um. Anyhow, so when working with CRA staff, we've kind of and looking at the lots. They've identified and we've identified priorities and kind of how far based on market value and appraised value of these properties, what how far the five hundred would get them. And not knowing the competition yet, not knowing who all is going to be participating in this. So it's just being prepared to be able to. Participate. Twee is on the phone too because she's the one that's going to actually do the, uh, do the. The bidding along with with Teresa Utterback on September fourteen. So. Five hundred thousand will only go so far. We're recommending the allowance to use of two five hundred, probably not. The the whole five hundred, but you know, having the flexibility to have some additional funds to. Be able to try to acquire as many of those properties as we can. To be able to eventually get some homes on them that are much needed in the city. And if you desire to do that, then we would recommend bringing back an inter local agreement on September eight, which would. Basically provide the authority to the CRA to utilize that funding and they actively do the bidding. I'll be there. Bonnie from CRA will be there, but Teresa and Twee will actually be online doing the actual bidding. It's, uh, something I've never. Experienced and look forward to participating in it, but they seem like they're pros at it. So we, uh, we're in good hands and we'll do the best we can. We don't know. Again, what the competition is, um, we're not, you know, we're going to obviously use good judgment on what our the thresholds will be on how much we're willing to spend for a property. Um, in absent of wanting to say too whole much more, uh, for those out there that may be interested in bidding as well, we're. We we ask for if you would like just to, uh. Utilize some of that funding to help us get as many as we can.
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
I support this.
And so Twee, I I see that your hand is raised. I'm going to unmute you. Twee says you're self muted if you'd like to speak.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Chair, um, Mayor and Commissioners. We're here ready to be able to assist and to, um, go move forward with this. We've been in contact with the housing authority and their auctioneer on a regular basis and we've had some clarification on their, um, package. They're still. Going to, we're still waiting the, um, some of the final requirements for registering and whatnot. But we would also request that a special meeting, they'll have a special, we'll have a special meeting for the CRA board to meet for the inter local and to facilitate that process to help the city. But we do have, um, you know, a good idea of these groupings. We're familiar with the properties as we've been doing this, as Lori said, for about three to four years. And this will be a good opportunity for us to move forward and get some, you know, some. Development and improvement on the property. Thank you. I'm here for questions.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Have we as CRA approved this five hundred thousand?
Yes.
You did. Okay, uh, we've been trying to, uh, acquire that land for. Years, those empty lots over there so we can. Move forward with some development. So I a hundred and ten percent, uh. Uh, support, uh, this particular move so that we can, uh. Move ahead with those with with the development of Cherry Hill. I mean, you're talking. Thirty five, uh, properties that they have been owning and we've been negotiating, trying to get them to move on it and. For whatever reason, they've finally made the decision to sell. So. Uh, whatever we can do to move forward with this, uh, I certainly want to. Had their motion motion been made. Uh, certainly better to make a motion to, uh, that we approve this, uh, five hundred thousand from the ARPA funding. To support the Palm Beach County Housing Authority acquisition for the thirty five Cherry Hill lots.
I second that. I, uh, Mayor, I'd just like to add, um, I believe it may already be in the. Agenda may not be, just want to make sure that we utilize CRA funds first. Is it already in there?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Then we'll use the ARPA funds to supplement, but absolutely, uh, this is a long time coming.
And and Mayor, if, um, if if the board or the commission wants to move forward with this, we'll. Be reaching out because, uh, the CRA meeting for for the adoption of the ILA on the CRA side is on the fourteenth at night. The auction is on the fourteenth, so we. We would request that you do a fifteen minute special meeting before our September eighth city commission meeting to let the CRA convene. Approve the ILA, then the city commission would, uh, do the same and have it ready.
So they'll know it, let us know on the the four end of the fourteenth or does it end on the fifteenth?
Twee, is is there twenty four hours after? You you can answer that better.
It will end on the fifteenth. It'll start on the fourteenth. At ten o'clock. And then it'll be closing on September fifteenth at ten o'clock.
And so this means that that's a a good amount. So like. Yeah, you'll have to, you know, inform me of the the bidding process a little bit, whether it's, um. Individually or as the the board, whether it's we put a max price for the property, a block. Because normally, uh, according to the tax deeds, it's you put the max bid and it goes up to that and there. They have a a much shorter window to bid, you know, allowing for the the twenty four hours means that someone could always. Um, outbid, uh, have an extended time to outbid. So I'll 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 look for the 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 information in regards to how the bidding process goes. I guess hopefully we'll have that answer on the eighth.
Um, I. I'm sorry, actually, they did respond to us. We did pose that question, how, what is the maximum amount of time for each lot and how they're releasing that? The representative from Fisher Auction did indicate that there's going to be and in their package that you may have received. They will start beginning on, let's say, lot one. And let's say if it starts at ten AM, lot two will close at ten oh five and so on and so forth. So it's, um, it's a five minute. Increment for each lot.
When they, the the bidding starts or when the bidding stops?
So when the bidding starts, lot one will have five minutes. Then they'll start going on lot two and they'll do it sequentially.
And so then when does lot one end?
Hopefully will be lot one. Well, as indicated in their email, lot, um, one will close at ten. And then lot two will close at ten oh five. So those are just examples and I can forward the board, um, the responses to our questions. We got the those responses at four o'clock. So it looks like five minute increments for each lot.
All right, thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Uh, just a question for Lori. Who who actually will be conducting the auction?
Um, the 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 housing authority has hired an auctioneer company Lamar Fisher. And they will, uh. Actually be conducting the online auction. And that's who we've been talking to, Mr. Fisher, uh, asking questions and, you know, as an interested party, we we received information and, you know, exactly how that happens. Twee and Teresa still be doing the actual bidding. I've been in direct communication with them.
Thank you.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor Grant, there is a member of the audience in the go to webinar, Mrs. Marla Carazo. Has her hand raised?
Marla? I think it says offline.
Okay.
So she did have her hand raised. And so Marla, are you there? I'm trying to unmute your microphone and it's not working. John, are you able to unmute her microphone?
No, Mayor Grant, I'm having the same issue as as yourself. She may have dropped offline.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further comments or questions?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
I do want to make a comment. I always want to make sure we we thank the staff and the people who are behind the scenes that don't get a lot of the credit for the work that they do to get us to this point. So. Thank you to Candace Walls. Candace is thebomb.com. Because she actually made this happen and literally handheld the the housing authority's hand to get them to this point so that we could be able to provide. More affordable housing opportunities within our city for our residents. So for those staff that, you know, are doing the work behind the scenes and sometimes don't get the credit, I do want to say thank you.
Her experience with HUD came in handy tremendously during this application process. It was a struggle for everybody. She got in the system, was certified and knew how to navigate it, which is a a feat in itself. So she was very, very helpful. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to discuss activation of the Historic Women's Club of Boynton Beach.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
I don't think it's the microphones on.
Can you hear me?
I may have to go to the podium.
All right, Catherine Montos, Assistant City Manager. I'm excited to present this item for discussion tonight regarding the activation of the Historic Women's Club of Boynton Beach. As you know, the city, the CRA transferred ownership of the building to the city earlier this year. And over the last several months, we have been working on. A construction plan that will start, um, October one for the next three fiscal years. And, um. The construction plan in year one, we will be, um. Working on installing Wi-Fi and security improvements to the building, replacing the restrooms and the elevator. Um, they're both desperately need upgrading and, um, and then for the next two years, we'll be working on the crosswalk. As, um, Gary discussed the the design for earlier on and that item was approved and then, um, also the, um, HVAC replacement. In year three of the construction plan. So basically, um. The building will be open. Right now we've still, we're we're, the building is open. Um, it's being rented pretty regularly. This is without a marketing plan, um, in place, which is excellent. Um, we have also worked with a consultant over the last couple of months to or to do a. Analysis of the building, um, and we also brought in vendors, event planning vendors. We brought in caterers, um. Event planners, uh, event rental companies and had did focus groups with them and had them. Give us feedback on the building as a rental, what would enhance it, what would be useful, what would make it, you know, the best possible, um, given the parameters that we're in with a historic building. And the reason I'm excited about this item is I've the feedback from the vendor community was incredible about the building. It's like. The best kept secret. They didn't know it existed, but they're excited about it. They're already daydreaming about plans in the building. And so we have, based on the recommendations from the consultant that we hired to do an activation analysis. Our recommendation to you, um, for the use of the building is basically to use it primarily for event rentals with occasional city programming. I think with the proximity to the beach, this what this, um, venue is particularly amenable to weddings. You can have a wedding on the beach and a beautiful reception at the building. The the ideas are endless, um, really for for all kinds of business meetings and private functions, um. And we are basically recommending to you that we use the building for for event rentals. Right now, the estimated, uh, cost to keep the building open, this is not including personnel to staff the building. Um, is about seventy thousand a year just to keep the lights on, the AC running, all the maintenance agreements in place to keep things in in running working order. And then our estimated, and this is a very conservative estimate for revenue. Would be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, um, and that. That's looking at maybe a a wedding there every other weekend, um, and then in the all the other. So like twice a month weddings, twice a month having other events. And obviously we would book it as much as we can possibly, but but our estimate, our, um, conservative estimate right now is a hundred and twenty thousand. For revenue. So this really could be a a wonderful revenue generating opportunity in a historic space that is a beautiful building. And then we also want to look at potentially hiring a consultant in the next fiscal year, um, twenty two, twenty three, um, to. Assist with business development and marketing of the space because right now we're getting calls all the time and the building is pretty booked. Without doing real business development and marketing of the space. So, um, that's our recommendation to you. I wanted to open it up for discussion and see, um, what you all. Have to say. Thank you.
Did you ask any tourism museum vendors to see if this would be a good idea? Or like tourism, um, yeah. Discover the Palm Beaches. Did you get any of their interpretation what this might be used for?
So the the consultant looked at at that that we hired to do the activation analysis and she did, um, look at different. Part.
No, 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 no. I asked, did Discover the Palm Beaches look at this site and gave a recommendation?
No.
Okay, did we look, did the consultant ask any museums or museum operators to determine what the the if this could work?
No.
Okay, so we only looked at one aspect of this facility. And that's what I disagree with way the staff took this. You know, there are multiple uses of the community. The this was the only public Addison Meisner building that is currently there. And that is what I would want it to be is to be open to the public. When I was there for the historical society, the main thing that they said is to use this building. It is not meant just for weekends. It is supposed to be meant for everyday use.
Totally, yeah, and that is the plan with our with the activation of it. It would be.
But maybe how can you have a wedding during the middle of the week?
It wouldn't, it's not just for weddings. I'm saying weddings because it's a beautiful wedding destination, but that's one idea of many for program programming the events. And it would be used for city programming. So there would be city sponsored, like city orchestrated events that would be there that would be open to the public. Um, the idea is that it would be a really wonderful space on the weekends to be revenue generating, but it was. To maintain it as a community asset and open to the community and available for the community as well.
You know, I I understand that and the the cost is still very less than, um, the the children's museum. That has added so much benefit to this city, uh, for the next generation. And so that's kind of where. You know, I've always worked with the the surfing museum and I'd like to hear from them to see what if they are still interested in this space. And what they would propose.
And Mayor, we've also taught, worked with the surfing museum. We have a couple of other ideas and we're kind of waiting to see how things work out with, um, I with, um, LOIs that have been. Submitted on a couple of different properties, but we are working with them. The goal is to help them and assist them and. Do what we can to help find them a place. The reality is that this building is a community asset and to occupy it. Basically, the feedback from almost every single vendor that we talked to said that to share the space would take away its value as. As an event venue, and that's not just for private rentals, but even the city's use or, um, and Lori, I don't know if you want to.
No, I, the question.
The 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 fact is, is that, you know, I'd like to hear from the surfing museum. They have come here for many months, um, to many different meetings. They have a, uh. Unanimous approval from our Parks and Recreation Board to go there. And so that's kind of where if the commission will allow it or like to hear from them before we let staff continue to. And so that's kind of where, if the commission will allow it, or like to hear from them before we let staff continue to talk. Mr. Warnke?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tom Warnke, 2780 Horcester Road. And I'm the Executive Director of the Surfing Florida Museum. Based on the information provided by city staff, it's clear that they believe the Women's Club building will make money for the city if the building is left as is with improvements of the bathrooms, elevator, ice machine, crosswalk, et cetera. Although this is a disappointment to the Board of Trustees of the Surfing Florida Museum and our friends who would love to see our museum located in Boynton Beach as a destination attraction provided to the city, we're hopeful that this dream can still come true somewhere in Boynton Beach. So thanks in advance for any support that the city or the CRA may be able to provide. Thank you. And I'm open for questions if you have any.
So you're saying you do not want the space anymore?
No, we're not saying that.
Okay, so what would you propose for that space? I know you've done it multiple times, so.
The, the city staff and myself sat down and we had a couple of meetings. And at those meetings, it was obvious that if the city rents out the building for events three or four times a week, especially weddings, and if they want to have a rehearsal dinner on Friday evening, that if we have a big display upstairs especially, that would have to be moved back and forth too, too many times. It just wouldn't, wouldn't be feasible. So I'm, I'm convinced of that. The activation survey that was done, they asked the event planners whether our exhibit downstairs in the East Room would be a detriment to leasing the building for weddings and so forth. And so that was the question that was asked. Whether or not we could still have a presence in the building and not interfere with events would be a question. But in the, in the survey that was conducted, it wasn't asked whether or not the Surfing Museum would be an enhancement to bring in events that wouldn't necessarily be interested in a blank slate. So I'm not here to protest the staff recommendation. I'm just here to hope that we can provide, or that the city can help us provide a location, a permanent location for our museum. And also, if the Women's Club is utilized for weddings and special events over the next couple of years, and it doesn't work out like has already happened in the past, then we're going to be standing by, hopefully, to still relocate in the city. So we want to be a good neighbor and not protest the results of what's already happened.
Thank you.
And I think just for clarification, Tom, I was just looking at the surveys. The question on here that I'm looking at, it says, how do you feel? We missed the word, I guess, about having an onsite themed attraction in the East Room would affect rentals? I don't think it was divulged what it was. Was it more, it was a discussion of the existence of a nonprofit? Or what did you guys ask?
They did print out on big foam boards, they printed out pictures of the exhibits from online, from the Surfing Museum, and they had them available for all the vendors that were there for the focus group. So they did see the specific pieces and exhibits that would be.
I, I think the feedback was mostly, when people want to rent it, they want the entire building. And that's not to say this isn't going to be open to the public. Obviously, it's a tremendous asset. It, we were just looking at opportunities, you know, we bring, we brought a lot of new buildings online. They all cost the city a lot of money. And we need to start identifying opportunities for revenues, and that's a beautiful place to do it. The Cultural Council just found out about the building. They're ready to publish it in some of their publications to help us. So there's a lot to be, to be done there. We've worked with, Tom, we've identified some other places with the CRA and some vacant space that we think, as I understand, Tom, your meeting today was kind of exciting. With, with one thing, we're, we're trying to research that we think would be a better spot and a good place for, for the museum. We wholeheartedly think it's an amazing, you know, their, their concept and their collection is very impressive. And, you know, we, we want to try to help them find a home here. We think it fits beautifully in Boynton Beach. We just don't want that to be at the expense of what could be possibly better, you know, more use, more intensive use of our high school, or excuse me, of the historic building. But I, I think we're on to something. If we can make that work, we would, they would have a nice home here.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I, I do support what I hear City Manager saying because somewhere down the land, we, the city's got to maintain and sustain these buildings. I understand what you're saying about the Children's Museum. But here we have a potential on the conservative side of about 120,000. And it's going to cost around 70,000 to maintain. That to me makes sense, especially since we're going to work with Tom to try to find another location for the museum. And he's willing to, to team with us to make that happen. I just feel that we just, again, the, when you have an event, most people that I know want to rent the whole building. And Tom has already stated, moving his display so many times could be damaging, and I don't know. But I, I just, I'd just like to say that we need to find another place for, for Tom and, and his operation and go with this revenue generating building for the Women's Club. It is historic. And I just feel that it's an opportunity that we need to take advantage of.
I, I agree with you that it's taken advantage of. You know, the, the question would have been, you know, how do you feel having an onsite beach themed attraction? I think we would get a different response. Because not everybody felt that that would be negative.
They, actually, they did have those conversations, I believe. And I think the, the response was, we want a kind of a vanilla shell, a plain room or building where they can create any theme they want.
I mean.
We have a Halloween wedding coming in October.
You know, I, I agree. You know, these are people that make money by selling decor. So there, there is a bias that I, I feel that there is there. And it's kind of like, is the, the city putting up the cost for the new ice machine, microwave, food warmer, stove and oven?
We probably will have to because the 250 that were allocated by the CRA for the three years will be spent most likely on those larger projects. If anything's left, we're going to put it towards these other expenses. But no, we, we plan on programming it in capital.
Okay. And then I guess the other question is, is how long will the site not be usable because of the elevator?
So it is programmed now through December. We're going to try to delay construction start to next April so we can program it through January, February, March, which is the absolute height of the season. Then remind me, Andrew, when we start, because the first, in April, if we start, it's going to be elevator and restrooms. And that shuts, shuts us down for how long? Do you guys know?
About six months.
About six months. And then are we able to then open back up, right, for the, be ready for the new season? Then the next project is the crosswalk?
Correct.
Is there balcony work to be done somewhere, too? No, okay. So we'll be down, so we'll, as I said, we'll stop programming through March of '22, then start the construction over the summer when the season's down and at the end of the year, hopefully, we finish.
No. I'm, I'm in favor for the Surfing Museum. It's, it's something that we have to look for, for the environment. The fact that maintaining its aspect of being part of the community rather than, and having people come here to learn more about Boynton Beach because we do have other catering halls. We do have other facilities. And that's kind of my mentality. And that's what I've always had. So I'll look for a motion to approve for that. If the commission sees else way, they're, they're free to feel that way.
Mayor, I, I understand your willingness to, you know, just kind of go, go to the mat for this organization. I, I do strongly believe that there is a good synergy for what they bring and the ambiance that they bring. And I, I think there are other places that we can do that. And it seems that staff is willing to still work with them to do that. So it's not that we're saying no, we're just saying no to this location. And I honestly, personally, as a woman who's gotten married, I, I would just say that, you know, if I were getting married at the Women's Center, I probably would not want to see surfboards. I would probably want to see beautiful decor. And I understand that, that mindset of it would be easier to just have a blank shell that allows for any wedding person or any venue or event that's happening to just have that ability, to just have a blank canvas to work with rather than having to move and remove and work around or making it a stagnant decoration feature that continues to always have to be a part of the element of that building's use. So because this is, you know, and I think the word that really sticks to me right now is highest and best use. Because right now we're looking for the highest and best use out of all the facilities that we've brought online the last few years, I see the highest and best use for that Women's Club is to be a place that allows for it to be a destination point for anybody who's having any event, wedding or otherwise, to be able to use that and put it in the place, in the way that they want to see it. Pay us the money that it's merited to be paid, then give it back in the way that they found it. That is the highest and best use of that facility. And so that's what I would support. And I would still support allowing staff to work with Mr. Warnke, if I'm saying that right, to find other locations in the city that can work, that can still bring the ambiance that you're asking for because I think it is a really cool feature. And I've had my son, for example, take a surf picture in that, that a water bottle surf thing that he created. It's a really cool feature. So I know that there are places that we can still find to allow for the Surf Museum to go, and we'll still keep working on that. So, but that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the, the, or if we need to make a motion, I don't know. But I would agree with what staff has presented.
The, the motion would be to move forward with the continued renting out of the facility as an event space?
Correct. So moved.
Saying no further discussion. Tom?
Would you repeat the motion?
To move forward with the Historic Women's Club of Boynton Beach as an event space.
As an event, yes.
As presented by staff.
Yes. And I do not see anyone with their hand raised? All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes 4-1. Item 10A, monthly update on the town square project by JKM Developers Attached.
Have staff, John, pull that up? Okay. Thank you, John.
All right. And so is there any, so we, the staff has received a revised site plan? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That considered a major modification that will be coming in front of the commission?
My understanding is it is a major modification, and we'll get to the city commission once processed.
Okay. Thank you. Next is item 10B, discuss, receive updating status of funding efforts by Lutheran Services of Florida to relocate from the existing location at 909 Northeast Third Street and discuss terms for purchase and sale agreement and new lease agreement.
Good evening, Mayor. This is Andrew Mack, Assistant City Manager, Public Services. This, this item is bringing, being brought back to you as a continuation from the July 6 meeting. We've had some continuing discussions with Lutheran Services about the Head Start location. And they brought back some information for you to discuss at the meeting. And I would allow you to have that discussion with, we have representatives from Head Start here as well as staff to answer any questions you may have.
So Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Thank you. So just to kind of get to the point on my position, I think that we should direct staff to assist with the relocation and coming up with the proper terms. I think that, you know, based on the meeting that took place a couple meetings ago, the opportunities that have fallen into place with the available property that the city just was conveyed from the CRA, everything just makes sense to me. So, you know, I'm moved by the efforts and display put on by the participants, the employees, and, and just how passionate they are about what they do and the community they serve. And the fact that it's a, it's a free service available to, you know, a number of children who might otherwise not have the opportunity. So I just, I like everything I see. And I would want staff to, to work with Lutherans and, and Head Start to try to figure out the best way to move forward. I just like everything. So I cut to the chase and say that.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I concur with my colleague, Commissioner Katz. At the last discussion, we, we were basically all in agreement with Lutheran Services. Outstanding opportunity. And unless there's something new that you just got to let us know, I'm, I'm in favor of moving ahead. With staff, you know, you work with them, too.
I believe we, you stated that you are working with the Department of, was it Housing and Urban Development? And have you received any sort of written confirmation or any information from them regarding the modular units?
We had not received information pertaining to that. We have received information pertaining to the funding.
Funding of the, the programming?
Correct.
Okay. And so up until you get the, a new space with funding for the modular homes or modular daycare, you can still provide services at the current location?
All right. Let me, let me be clear. Perhaps I was not enough clear. We submitted a proposal last year, and we have received confirmation. I have received the notification of award for $9,050, $153,000, almost a million dollars. That money has been given to us for this purpose. Once the land is given.
For this purpose, the, the providing of services or the building?
For the prefabricated building.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have the money to provide the services. We have an award for five years.
Okay.
We also are requesting $458,000 for carryover from this year, money that we have in the account, asking permission to, from the federal government to use it for this purpose. We also are requesting $93,000 from the startup fund that has been given to us. We asked them to please provide to us authorization to use it for the land. They say yes. And we asked them for the disaster relief fund also to give another $93,000 for this project. And the answer was yes. So we have money for operation and we have money for construction.
All right. Thank you so much. And so I have spoken with some of the HUD representatives out of Atlanta and Jacksonville and doing some, you know, math, even if we sold the property for a million dollars, let's say. And if daycare is at $10,000 a year, that would only provide 100 families with daycare for one year, which is not necessarily a good services. So the fact that the Lutheran Services of Florida is able to provide free daycare for multiple years, decades, hopefully perpetuity, is the, what I'm very excited about. I also was sad to hear that it is only meant for people under poverty. So that people who are above the poverty limit aren't allowed to go to Head Start? Is that still correct?
That's not completely correct.
It's a, it's a percentage above.
It's a percentage.
But, you know, someone who's nowhere near poverty couldn't send their kids there because of the, the situation that the federal government doesn't want to mix incomes, which I don't think is correct. But if you have space to teach kids, you should be able to teach them regardless of their parents' income.
And the federal government allow us to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that because what you were saying with having the, the teachers with the master's degree. with the master's degree, it's something that we want to change the perception of our society that people of mixed incomes cannot be involved in the same activities. And I feel that that's something our federal government has segregated a lot of our students from where the Supreme Court and Milliken versus Bradley said de facto segregation is still legal in this country. So, you know, it's, I had to do a little bit more research to get a better understanding what Head Start is and what it isn't. And so the services that you provide to the people in need is amazing, and so thank you for that. The, the aspect of doing what we can for the community so that they're the people that are, you know, on that slope that is making above, you know, that is a little bit higher up on the hill, that is making more than the poverty, has a percentage payment versus people who don't, who like the facility because it's brand new in our central location, still would have that access. So I appreciate you looking forward and allowing me to do the research. One of the things I did, requests from Andrew Mack was the, the form, IRS Form 990, because Lutheran Services is a big organization, so I just wanted to see, you know, the, the history of, and the, to see the competency of your organization to make sure that there shouldn't be any issues.
And the result of that 990, Mayor?
I know, I just asked.
It's attached to the backup agenda.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's me too.
I guess does the commission have any other questions or comments?
No, no questions, no comments, just that it is exciting and motivating that we are a partner to you all, and you are a ready and ambitious partner to actually receive the land that we plan to convey, and you have all your ducks in a row to make it a possibility and reality. So I, it's not often that we get to work with partners like that, and I'm actually happy about that. And, you know, it just makes me happy that you are, you're, you've got your stuff together. So that being said, so moved.
So I ask for more.
Million. I, I feel compelled to make a comment for clarity purposes. The million dollars that has been given to us, it has been given to us, we have accepted the money. Nevertheless, the federal government obligates us that once we receive the land, to submit the Form 1033. That forms ensure the same thing that you are doing, that we use the money properly. So that form need to be also approved by them. And I feel that should be a notice that Lutheran Services shall disclose this information.
Yeah, no, it's, thank you very much, and we look forward to that.
Thank you very much.
We still have about another hundred homemade cards for all of you in our office.
Okay, item 10C, discussion, only of draft ordinance number 21-020. So this is the discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm trying to move it from the table.
Thank you.
This is back before you, not as an ordinance for first reading, but as a draft of the ordinance that you saw back in June. I attached as part of the back of the minutes from the June meeting where you began but really did not conclude any question regarding the goals and objectives of the commission with respect to the suggestions contained in the draft monument ordinance. There were some comments that were made, they, they were reflected in the minutes, and they could easily be inserted into a draft, working its way back to you for first, for first reading. However, I do think, you know, there is more information needed from the point of view of the commission regarding, regarding goals and objectives. These are tricky times to try to draft an ordinance regarding monuments when the trend with respect to public monuments has been to take them down rather than to put them up over the past couple of years. And the commission should be mindful of how societal goals and objectives and points of view change over time, so that the monuments that would come up under an ordinance in Boynton are the types of monuments that would reflect positively on the city, you know, for quite a long time, because they're built to last. So with, with that introductory comment, I'd just like to know if the commission's prepared to discuss and provide some additional information about what, what you see being included.
Commissioner Katz?
Thank you. So I'll kind of reveal my position real quick. I don't come to the position that I don't want to support any version of this. Couple of reasons being, and some of it stems from our conversation last time. One is that I, I fear whoever would be deciding what monuments were permissible, it would open a can of worms, whether it was this commission that was submitted proposals, whether it was the city manager and appointees or a committee. We, we received an email, at least I did, I think others might have gotten it too, you know, from someone who, who wanted the city to celebrate a White History Month and a heterosexual love month as a, I'm sure they have their motives. My belief is that that's some weird attempt to call that equality and equal treatment under the law, but I worried that that logic, under a set of rules that wouldn't allow us to say, maybe you have an ulterior motive, would allow monuments of conflicting or otherwise offensive views to be put in our parks permanently, hypothetically, depending on how this language shaped up. Basically allowing people to, to turn our public spaces into, you know, that's the park for these people or this group, you know, that's the park where there's a pro and anti-monument on the same land. I just worry it opens up a can of worms, and I guess I've cooled to the idea, and I guess the last point I'll make is that all of this kind of stemmed from a single resident requesting a monument, and then it kind of snowballed into a monument policy discussion. In my five-plus years up here, I've never had a single resident ask about monument policies. In discussing this with some of the residents that I talked to on a regular basis, they expressed concerns that it would make these, our public spaces, you know, basically co-opted by different groups for different purposes, and it would, it would kind of take away from the, the nature of a public space, which is just a city-owned piece of land that's for the public without conditions or viewpoints being expressed every which way. So I'm, I'm at a point where I just don't want to move forward with it, because I think it opens up cans of worms that, that could become very difficult.
Well, I was recently in Washington DC, and the aspect of the monuments there, it's, it's one of those things that gives you reverence and, you know, and pride to be an American. You know, looking at Ulysses S. Grant in front of the Capitol Building, the Washington Monument, the Jefferson Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial. Those are things that add culture and history to ourselves as a country. And so I'm not going to rule out the ability for us to honor and bring and to remember the cultural aspect of Boynton Beach. You know, we, we have the information on websites, I believe it's ordinance 36 and 37, where previous city commission decided to segregate the city. You know, I, it's, it's good that we have that information open to the public, but it's something that we need to make sure that people understand the, the hard work of people that made it so that there is no longer the, that type of segregation in our city. You know, it's the, the people that have done very well. You know, one of the things is our former high school athlete Lamar Jackson, winning the Heisman Trophy, winning the MVP, Jessica Ramsey going to the Olympics and making it to the finals in shot put. There, there's aspects of the history of Boynton Beach and the state of Florida that I feel that if, we are not necessarily the ones that are spending the money, but it's something that we should move forward with. Because based upon what you're saying, is that you would not want to have the veterans' park there because of the veteran, you know, because the monuments are there to honor our military.
That's most definitely not what I said.
Okay, so you're okay with certain monuments?
I think that this city commission right now has the right to vote and erect monuments, dedicate parks, make crosswalks commemorating groups of individuals we want to recognize. I don't support turning it over to a formal process whereby anyone could recommend anything and-
And have staff go through for it. You're more in the position that if someone wants a monument built, to come to us directly to get approval, then, and to have staff to go through the direction of the city commission?
If-
Similar to the, the Veterans Advisory Board?
Correct.
That we're not, you're not saying no to monuments, you're just saying to no to this procedure, because the city commission should approve the idea of the monument first before there's a plan.
Correct. I, I believe that that is how it is right now. I think if anybody came to us and said, well, just like the recommendation to commemorate veteran parks after Mr. Kaiser, you know, that was a recommendation from a resident of the city on behalf of, of Mr. Kaiser, and we elected to move forward. I think that, that that was a judicious public process versus just submitting an application and then having some, some employees vet it in their own eye behind the scenes. So that is a fair characterization of my position.
Okay. And so Jim is, and Lori, is that the current policy that the city commission is able to approve an idea of a monument and have city plan with the organization or individual, including an advisory board of the city?
That structure currently exists, yes. Yeah, and it's not specifically defined, so it gives the city commission the latitude on how to advance it.
Okay. So is everyone okay with that sort of policy regarding monuments?
Satisfied with the way it is.
Okay.
What, what did you mean, the way it is as written or as it is today?
Jim just stated, left off to the-
Initially, the, what Commissioner Katz, Vice Mayor, and I am saying is that the current policy for individuals to propose an idea of a monument and a location and bring it up to the city commission and have us bring it onto the agenda to move forward with a plan is something that is open to everyone and that it should not be a former policy that is outlined in, what is it, section, section six, the review process, where there's a monuments administrator conducts a preliminary review. I think before any of, as Commissioner Katz says, before anything that the city does, the city commission should be able to review it and have it, have a public discussion on it before there's an application of any sort of planning by the city. So it is not open to the public to fill applications, it is open to the public to give us ideas of what they would like.
Right.
Either one. So I'll, I'll just start. There's a couple of things about this conversation that I want to focus on. And first of all, we, we need to establish, do we want to have monuments or statues in general? Because what I'm hearing is a little confusing for me, because part of what I'm hearing is that we don't need this policy that's been written up, because right now anybody could come to us and make their proposal and let us be the deciding body. But that's as is today. So in other words, you're suggesting there's no need for a separate policy, we have a system in place, anybody can just come, make a presentation, we decide right here amongst the five of us.
I would say that the idea would be something that the, the commission would approve, and then the plan of the, the monument, the funding of the monument, and then the implementation are the three other aspects. So the city commission doesn't just necessarily approve an idea of a monument, there's all the other aspects of it being able to withstand a hurricane as all of our other sculptors.
That's right, which, which I support, but I just want to specify a couple of things. One, I like the idea of having a written policy. We need to clean it up, we need to shape it in the way that we'd like, but I want to make sure that there's a clear process. And, you know, if you don't like the process that's described therein, we can change it. But, you know, having a clear-cut policy, so there are some really good things in this proposal, such as getting some community feedback, right? We needed to flesh that out. But if you, if you wanted to have a statue in this neighborhood, I want to make sure the neighborhood's good with that, right? So having some written policy in addition, you know, on top of what we can, what we already have, where anyone can come to us, is a good thing. But the other point that I wanted to make more broadly is that what we really need is to think big picture. Last meeting or the last time we discussed this, you know, I gave some very specific feedback, and we all went line by line. But we should probably hear from what other cities are doing, because this situation has been figured out. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, and, and yes, there have been controversial situations, but by and large, people have put together safeguards and best practices for it. So what I would like to ask from staff, if this is a conversation that this body wants to continue to have, is just kind of a survey of, of what major cities are doing and how they handle their statues and monuments policy. Jim, I guess I can ask you this question now, when you put together this draft, you know, in the course of that, you know, did you take a look at what major cities were doing and?
Yes, Commissioner, that's what most of this language derives from, is I've probably read 30 or 40 different municipal, and, and also some federal regulations regarding monuments, procedures for doing it. What you're reading is not something I thought up when I woke up in the middle of the night. I stayed up until the middle of the night reading some stuff while drafting, and then I went to sleep.
Yeah, you know, so, so basically, if we want to have this conversation, for me, it would be most helpful if we began with big-picture questions first. Do we need a separate policy or do we not? Maybe that's the first part of this conversation.
You know, based upon what Commissioner Katz said in regards to not turning down ideas and allowing people to come to the public, you know, comments, an audience, and saying, this is the idea that I have, that's something we have built in into our-
Already.
Already meetings.
Yep.
So the, the aspect of it is, is that this commission, based upon our own rules, we require, you know, the, the consensus of the commission to put items on the agenda.
Right.
And so that's the, the first step of that. And so that's kind of where, if we want to have a more than a three-minute discussion on an item, there's a consensus of three or more, we can have that discussion at an item, and then move forward with the, the steps of planning, funding, and implementing that monument, because maybe it's a city-initiated.
For now, I'll just say that I'm very much in favor of what Jim has put together. Yes, we need to tweak it and make all those changes, but what I interpreted from my reading of that draft ordinance are protections in place. I think those are good things. We want to make sure that the monuments send a mission, sent a message of inclusion and its education, and it doesn't favor one religion or another. And by having that kind of policy, it prevents those difficult situations that Commissioner Katz was concerned about. So I think, you know, some version of this is a good thing and alleviates some of our worries. So for now, I'm going to put my support behind having a draft ordinance, but if you, the rest of you are comfortable with, you know, what's already possible, if anybody just- of anybody just coming here, that's okay with me as well.
So Commissioner Katz, would you agree with the review process as I kind of had proposed with the language that is already there?
So I, and again, I see merit on both sides. I thought that was what was interesting about, about this whole monument policy was that it is 100% subjective, right? Like there might be best practices or some examples of what has worked. But by and large, there's no like right and wrong way to do this. So, so I vacillated because if you remember when, when the individual who came in to propose a monument spawned all this, did my initial position was, well, wait a minute, we need to have some, some rules. And that's what kind of moved this forward. But as I thought more about it, if you, right now, it's one individual who came in and we can review their proposal based on its, you know, substance and decide what to do. If we create a formal process, I feel like it will invite people to submit more and, and open the door to that, the controversy that I fear. Yeah, I just, my kind of base position is if someone wants us to consider something that they come in, submit something, we deliberate over it as a board as we, as we would in the past. And I just, I don't want to invite people to start claiming places in the city as, as their own because once we let what we might deem, you know, good causes in, it opens the door for that argument of, well, you know, how did you let this group do it but not this viewpoint? I think now we have total control over it. If we make a policy, we're defining rules that people could exploit or abuse in the name of equity or what some people have proposed some ridiculous ideas under. So I just worry that it, it opens a can of worms, like I said, versus right now, five elected officials having a public conversation, making a decision. We could always decide, you know, on, on any sort of case by case basis if we want to have community input. I like that we have control over that or whatever a future commission looks like has control. I think by making a process that what we decide in that policy will take control away hypothetically from future commissions.
Hey, I've just, I've been listening to both sides and as initially I heard it, I was definitely leaning towards Commissioner Penserga in terms of, you know, wanting to have something that's outlined and that's clear and that people can follow. But, you know, I, I think Commissioner Katz makes a very strong point in that the fact, the very fact that we would outline it and spotlight it gives, you know, that's, that's, it invites, you know, the opportunity for somebody to say, okay, let me find a loophole. And, you know, I, I think that's, that's probably the part that we want to avoid. And in essence, the only reason we went down this whole rabbit hole was for somebody who brought forward an idea and, and we were to deliberate on it. And in trying to make a decision, we were trying to put a blanket, you know, resolution, not necessarily resolution, I mean like an ordinance, but a blanket resolution to the request that he made in terms of, okay, how do we address requests like this in the future? But I think we may be trying to solve a problem that doesn't necessarily exist. Whereas in the five, nearly six years that I've been up here, that was the only time I've ever had a request for a monument with the exception, of course, of, of the Veterans Park with, with, I forget his name, Tom Kaiser. So, I mean, and that was a, wasn't that kind of like city or somewhat city initiated in a way? I mean, it was recommended by the public, but still we, we kind of were willing to do that. So, you know, I, I think it's just, it may be a little heavy handed to try to pass this ordinance with just one request that came before us. And passing this ordinance again opens the door and invites many, many others to propose many, many things that then can get kind of lost. So, I mean, I don't know if I'm, if I'm even making a point anymore at this point. But I think my point that I'm trying to say is maybe we should just leave Weller alone. That's it.
Yeah. I think it's, it's kind of a guess, Commissioner Penserga.
Mayor, I respect my colleagues and their point of view, but I just wanted to say that I respectfully disagree. By having these guidelines and, you know, if you read it and it talks about what kind of things people could submit and how you would handle it and who would pay for it and what kind of materials and what the review process is, I don't think that it's going to invite a flood of people coming left and right. What these guidelines do or what this proposed ordinance would do is essentially create a filter to prevent exactly the worry that, that's been expressed here. Without these filters, without these guidelines, without these parameters, anybody could come here and present anything. And it can be an entirely political decision, who's friends with whom and who likes what. I thought that this process essentially pretty much guided that and it looked for specifications and made sure that the message was always inclusive. It's non-controversial. That was my take from my reading of the draft ordinance. And yes, it is true that one individual did bring forward an idea for a monument. But, you know, I don't think that's a negative for trying to be proactive and having a, a policy in place, again, that filters and prevents those controversial situations. It's very clear here about what kind of statues or monuments are possible and, and that should it become controversial that they must be changed. It's all, it's all spelled out. But in any case, this is not the biggest issue that to be addressed today. It's obviously non-urgent, but I just wanted to respectfully disagree with what's been said.
Thank you. And, you know, part of the, the question I have is, you know, the, the naming of a lot of the facilities in Boynton Beach, you know, the Ezel Hester Center, the Carolyn Sims Center, Sarah Sims Park, John Denson. You know, that's, that's something that we, the city has done in the, the past to recognize the individuals' efforts and contributions to the city. And there's no, Lori, is there a policy to name?
Yes, sir. We have an ordinance for a naming procedure that the commission has to first then consider, send it to an advisory board, which is typically the Rec and Park Board. They make recommendations, come back, just like for Tom Kaiser Veterans Memorial. They came back with some iterations and it's a pretty simple process.
So what I think is, is to look at what we currently have with the, the naming. And so to see if that's similar to what the monuments are. If you're okay with that, so that we don't have it so that there's an application that gets reviewed by staff first, that it comes to the city commission first, I think is one of the things that Commissioner Katz was saying is because, correct, anyone at any time can come to us and have the idea. But what we don't want is for anyone to feel that they have momentum moving forward because staff is reviewing it. If that's somewhat accurate?
Or I guess, and then I'll, I'll restate that I, I think that all this is very subjective. So I don't think that I'm either wrong or right. It's just my preference or the Commissioner Penserga is wrong or right. Because again, at the onset of this, I was in favor of crafting a uniform policy, but I've evolved on that. I just, what was your question? I just wanted to put that out there in a, in a diplomatic fashion, Mayor.
It gets lost.
So today, if someone wanted to put up a monument without changing anything, wouldn't the process be to come before the committee and to get approval? Isn't that the way it is now? So what are we?
A committee, it would be the commission.
The commission. Yeah, I mean, but if, how do I put it? Okay, if I wanted to build a statue, a monument of myself and put it in Sarah Sims Park, okay?
Mayor, you need a second for that.
Thanks, Jim. I need it.
It'll be in the backyard.
Exactly. But I, I would just fill out paperwork and bring it to the city. I'm just trying to find out what's the current way I would handle it. And if we don't have one, then, then what Commissioner Penserga is saying that we do need to take a look at, maybe modify and tweak in what Jim has put together, that it fits as many cases as we can think of right now and, and then go forward from there. And if we find out something down the line, if this commissioner or the new commissioner, whomever, find out that is something that is, is an outlier that we don't want, maybe we have to go back and tweak that ordinance to, to, to fit the overall. But we need to start someplace and what you put together makes sense, okay, right now.
That's the problem right now.
Pardon? Who said that?
Sorry, my Vice Mayor said, that's the problem right now. You know, we don't know what we don't know and we don't know what the future holds. And I, and, and I think that's what I'm saying in terms of making that heavy handed fix for something that's never really presented as a problem, except for the one time, is I think that the issue that we're, we're over correcting for a problem that doesn't necessarily exist.
And you're absolutely right. There's no wrong or right thing here. We just have to make a decision as to what would fit the overall, I guess. And we have a policy on everything else. I'm in favor of just leaving it alone, but...
Yeah. I agree with you. Let's do it.
Yeah, but...
I, I think that's mine and I'd like for our attorney to give us the, the naming rights, ordinance, so that we see if we need to change that. But I, I think that's kind of where either a monument or naming rights, they're very similar with their perpetuity aspect of it. And so let's do something so that, you know, one's not majorly different than the other one. And so if I, I can get consensus on that, we can move forward with another discussion at a future time. I'm asking to have us review the, the naming rights so that it's similar to what would a monument be? Yeah.
Can I suggest, I'll just circulate that, that, those guidelines to the members of the commission if somebody wants to move it forward in the future. I guess it'll get added to the agenda. And in the interim, and until such time as, you know, some type of policy has worked out, I would just think that the individual members of the commission would be guided at least by those bullet points between line eighty-six and ninety-four in deciding whether to move an item forward to the commission agenda if somebody else out there decides they'd like to create a monument in Boynton Beach. I think those cover the points that would certainly explain anything that you have today, like the Veterans Memorials and would, would cover you in the interim.
The difference there is that we have a park dedicated for veterans, statues, benches, whatever you want to call it. These other categories we don't have and are designated piece of property for that. These are public parks and by definition, it should be public park.
Okay, Jim. Thank you. Yes, you may. You have to come to the podium.
Uh oh. You're in trouble now.
Public park, I go for the entertainment, relaxation, enjoyment. I don't go there for anything designated to recognize anything. Matter of fact, if I go to the park, I want to get away from everything, recognize everything. Don't like to have to, somebody doesn't like this about it, doesn't like that about it. It doesn't need to be at a park. Park is for relaxation, recreation, and get away from everything that makes you crazy. And that means that somebody wants this statue and that statue. I don't like that statue. Now you created confusion at the park because of a monument. And that's not why you go to a park. Just think about that. Everything does not have to be symbolized to recognize something. A park is to recognize relaxation. And you see, I'm not at a park right now because I'm not really relaxed. Oh, I, I've been saying, you have a big responsibility. People pop up, want to do this and want to do that. You don't have to do all that. Recognize a park for what it is. Keep it that way. Some things don't have to change. This is not broken, but it will be broken if you start putting things in there that has nothing to do with recreation, relaxation, playing. You take your children out there, you take your grandchildren out there. Now you got to explain this statute about this and that. They have nothing to do with a park. A park is a park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get you some ice creams.
I believe back in February, Vice Mayor, we mentioned about Heritage Park. And you mentioned your sister being as part of that. Did we go anywhere with that?
No, but there is room on the plaque to do that. I just, I have to get with Andrew on getting it, probably getting it scheduled. I think we were adding two names.
Two names, yeah.
And it's escaping me right now, embarrassed to admit. I got to look it up.
I was mentioning the, the former Commissioner Vice Mayor, Matt McCray.
Right. Did, I have to look and see, did you all vote on that?
I don't think we voted on it because you never got back to us.
No, it can be done. I think we informed you of that. There's plenty of room on, there's still... Yeah, there's probably room, I would say for at least six or seven more names on that existing plaque. Now we have to get it off and obviously get it engraved, but yeah. No, I think we knew that. It's just, I'd have to honestly look up the item, Mayor, but if you...
I don't recall the names, so...
It was your, your sister Vice Mayor?
Lilian Otis.
Yes.
That was one of them.
And, and then the mayor raised Commissioner McCray.
Yes.
Sorry, what are we talking about?
So there's, you know, there, there is a heritage park on the corner of, southwest corner of Marv King Junior Boulevard and Seacrest with names on it of the people in the community. And so with that, there are, it's about half full or maybe like sixty percent?
I would say sixty.
Sixty to seventy percent.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of where for African American History Month, you know, making sure that we are recognizing the people in our community that have contributed to it. So Mildred, I understand what you're saying and so it's, we, there are certain parks for certain things. And so we don't want to mess up the parks that make you relax.
Amen.
Not broke, don't fix it.
All right. And then the last discussion on the, the agenda is eleven A. Per Mayor Grant's request, F has prepared some preliminary information for discussion by City Committee on Timeline Mission Workshop and issuing of a Parks and Recreation Bond referendum for the March two thousand twenty-two election.
Mayor, I think staff worked with, and here comes Mara, she worked with, is Jay still on the phone?
He is.
Oh, God bless you, Jay.
He had another meeting, so he was texting me.
Jay is our financial bond advisory council that has worked with the city and over the many, many years for, I mentioned Mark Raymond earlier, Commissioner Penserga. He's our legal bond counsel. Initially, I thought he was going to be on the meeting, but Jay is actually the one, he's, he's on tonight.
Yeah, he's our financial advisor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Mara. So our preliminary schedule that we've kind of laid out for you, some of the dates to note, September first is only two weeks away and it does kind of lay out your workshop that we would have to discuss what parks you would want, what kind of funding you would need, things like that. We would have to market that so that we would have resident buy-in and contribution there as well. And then December first is when it has to go to supervisor of elections. So that's kind of why this timeline is the way it is. It starts in September. October, November is really preparing the bond resolutions for our financial analysts and getting that to commission for a meeting and then to the supervisor of elections and then... And then um, that's our main deadline, which is the December first that we have to hit. So you would also have three meetings in the month of September. You would have your September eighth meeting, you would have your September twenty-first meeting, and then you would also.
And, and we backed in from the ballot date, backed all the way to today of exactly everything that would have to get done. So uh, we didn't just pull the dates out of our, our head. It was literally if this has to be done within two weeks, and this has to be done by the state and the state and the state. So it's, it's a very aggressive schedule, but it's possible. And, and it's, it's, we just, we didn't, you know, we want to just give you a, a framework for your discussion because that's what this item is. The mayor had requested it be on the agenda for you all to potentially talk about whether or not you want to do a, a wreck and park bond. So um, a lot more work would still need to be done on this, but we didn't want to do that just yet till we got some direction from the entire commission.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yeah.
First, I just want to say that I think this is a good idea, right? This is an opportunity to make unprecedented investments in our park, but I just have two major concerns. Before we embark on this, I, I think the first thing that needs to happen even before I can agree is for us to even have a sense of what investments are we making exactly? Um, and to what park? What, what will that look like? What's the vision? I think that needs to come first before we take this uh, route. Number two, I am concerned about the number of public input meetings here. I only see one because it's an aggressive timeline. I do want multiple meetings over the course of multiple months. Uh, so there's plenty of opportunity for the public to chime in. So right now, those are just my two concerns, um, but the intention is, is good and well. I want to make sure that those two items are addressed.
Yes, I just want to add a couple more items in addition to that. To, to have a bond referendum, that's a, to me, that's a huge undertaking, and it's almost like we're trying to rush it. The other point of concern that I have is that we have somewhere around twenty-nine parks already. Why do we need another park? That we want to go out and do this, and we have to maintain those parks. So I, I just not sure I'm ready to, to expedite such a move at this, at this stage of the game. Those are my concerns.
Uh, and I definitely hear your concerns. You know, the, the aspect of this is that this is also dealing with our urban tree canopy that we're dealing with. And the, the main thing that I have is that this is something for the residents to be voting on to see if they want to have the excess funding, uh, excess funding directly to the parks and recreations. Because as someone mentioned, it's, it's a place to go relax. It's, you know, it's something that adds value to our residents. In addition, uh, according uh, the Commissioner Katz perspective, that it, this goes quarterly in the sense is that it's divided up to all the districts so that not, one district does not get more than another. That's something that I also agree with, that, you know, we have the, the twenty-nine parks. However, not all the parks have received the same amount of funding over the past few years. With the District Four, with us creating the Eco Park, this is something that uh, can greatly enhance that and move that forward. Um, not with, not with relying just on the quantum park overlay development district. As you mentioned, you would want the whole city to help pay for this because it's an aspect of the whole city. There's certain land that's available um, in each of our, uh, each of the districts. There is a, an aspect of renovating all of Pence Park that has not occurred. You know, District One, you know, keep on adding to the, the barrier-free park, the, the tennis center. And the, the land just west of the, the fire station along Wilbright Road. There is the ability for us to remove the, the vacant land that is in the, the city and add value to our residents. Not, uh, and including having that urban tree canopy for the, the residents and what we are proposing for the environment because, you know, we all know that it's getting hotter in here, and one of the things to help cool us off is hanging underneath the tree. So this is also in the, the fact that we are doing complete streets, so the, the landscaping of it. You have all of our medians that if we want to really move forward, we have the ability to start planning for canopy trees there and removing the palms. So I understand what you're saying, and the, the, the main thing is, is giving this to the, the people to, to have the vote. Where, you know, if you feel the, the March timeline doesn't work, and you would want to have it at a, a future timeline, let's say in November, uh, I'm okay with that. And so this does not need to be rushed to have it just on the, the March election. However, I would like to start it um, for the, the residents to have a vote on.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with future dialogue about this. It's just that, I mean, we have one senior saint building in, in Boynton, as I know of. Are you saying that we, each district needs to have a senior saint? Uh, but the, the point that I want to make is, of those twenty-nine parks, how are they distributed and, and who's, who's asking for another park, in all fairness?
It's, it's, it's trying to make all the parks better. So I don't know if you've been.
Trying to make all the parks better or add another park?
No, it's making them better. So I don't know if you've been to the splash pad and barrier-free park?
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of like, you know, adding that sort of amenity, not just there. So having something east of ninety-five with the, the splash pad. As I mentioned with the Eco Park, Pence Park, it's currently a park. However, you know, there's a complete redesign that is going forward, and there's needs that funding for that complete redesign.
So has there been a cost analysis, uh, something done for the parks?
There has been preliminary.
No, 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 no. You, you're saying for the maintenance of the park?
We're already maintaining the park.
We're already maintaining, maintaining the park.
So that's kind of.
So you're saying we need to go above and beyond what we're doing?
What I'm saying is that in, rather than just maintaining the park as is, we are going to have a capital project, which is the bond, to make the prod, you know, make the park better because we have the funding in the budget to maintain it at as it currently is. We don't have the money in the budget to do a complete redesign.
Well, as for me, I will be willing to discuss this later on, but not now.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Katz.
Thank you. So I guess that would be my question, the, a reference you made. We could hypothetically, if the timeline is a concern, has, has been expressed, and it is for me as well due to, it's always a big ask to ask people to, to approve a bond because you're, you know, you're taxing yourself, and the timeline is tight, and the public input opportunities are reduced as a result of that. Can we have a municipal bond vote on an August or November ballot? Or do they have to be contained in a March municipal election?
I think we would have to pay, just pay for a special election with them.
I think so.
Yeah.
We can go to that municipal election.
For November.
There's a price tag for it.
Thank you.
Not, if there's a November election, obviously we tag that on to what's already existing, um, next November. Are there any?
I mean, I'm not saying to there is. I'm not, you know, saying so it's like we have a special election, you're saying that we would have to pay for the, the hundred thousand dollars?
If, if you're trying to put something to vote that is not a regularly scheduled election that the supervisor's running, a crystal pipe in if I misspeak, or our election that's already funded, so March and November, and I don't even know if there's anything on the next November twenty-two. If you want to do your own election, you've, you've got to pay for everything on it, so it's a hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 we're saying just tack it on to the November, the August primary coming up in twenty-two.
No, that's what I'm saying. You do not pay for that, but if you do your own, yeah.
Yeah, it would hypothetically, under the scenario of March is too tight, there are August primaries this year. There's a November general in twenty-two, um, so the opportunity is there to use more time and hold it outside of the municipal election itself in March. Um, and I think that, that for me might be the best way to proceed because I do support the, the underlying aspects of this. There are some, some parks that exist but have not been activated. They're not funded. They've just kind of been sitting as land. There are some parks that are under-maintained. Um, they could use like a one-time injection of funds to, to bring them up to spec. And then the, the current maintenance of them, you know, would satisfy them. I, I do think um, in agreement with, with Vice Mayor, that more time would benefit the community. And, and also in, in an effort to, to pass it presumably, if, if we're supporting, putting it on there for residents to vote, just more exposure and, and time kind of advertising and planning it out, you know, could not hurt it. So um, that would be my request maybe as a compromise to say that I do think this is a valid question to ask the voters. They would be the ones deciding to approve it or not ultimately if it's on the ballot. And that if we gave them more time, um, the November twenty-two election, you know, gives an extra six months, give or take. I think that alleviates the concerns and allows for a more deliberate preparation to iron out these questions about new parks, existing parks, um, identifying the specific parks in each, in each district if we go with that equal split. I know that when the sales tax referendum passed in two thousand sixteen, which was for capital infrastructure, at least for the school district side, prior to it passing, they had already identified every single penny and how it would be spent. And that you can go to a website to this day because that sales tax exists for up to ten years um, and look at every project, the estimated cost, if it's completed, if it's fifty percent. So I, I think that the more information you provide the public, the more likely it is to be received well, and, and time will allow for that additional preparation.
Yeah.
Hey.
Yes, Commissioner Ramos.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Katz has a knack for taking the words out of my mouth, but that's exactly what I was going to say, that we really do need to make sure, and, and I wholeheartedly agree with this. I think this is one of the best things that you've pushed. Best things that you've pushed, um, you know, because we, we actually, we actually absolutely do need um, to allocate some more funding towards our parks um, that could help beautify them and keep them um, beautiful in perpetuity. And the only way to actually do this and do it right is to get as much possible public input and to educate the public on why we are telling them to tax themselves in order to improve our park. So a good marketing campaign, getting Eleanor and the team on this would really be crucial to make sure that we can actually pass um, this bond if, if that's what we ultimately want. So I would, you know, push for putting it uh, probably in the, I would say in the August, just so that it doesn't get lost in the November election. And then taking the time between now and, and August to really uh, roll out a, a strongly planned and well-executed marketing campaign to get this passed. Thank you.
To, you know, for example, in Denson Pool, those um, locker rooms have not been upgraded for a long time, and I don't know if they're part of the, the capital improvement plan.
Is that at Hester's?
No, the, the, the bathrooms look like they're from the seventies. And so that, that's something that, you know, there's areas like, you know, we just did a capital improvement for Ezel Hester, but that was in our capital improvement plan for five-plus years. And so it's something that we were able to plan ahead of time for a very long time. But there's a lot of aspects of other parks in the, the city that don't get that same amount of usage, don't get that same amount of love, that we want to um, give them the, the care because we are still maintaining them at the same cost, even though they're not top-tier parks. Yes.
Um, what I would like to see from staff would be uh, that, that itemized list of what are these improvements and some of these wish lists things that we, we want to see done? What that numerical amount would look like? That way we actually know what we're also bonding for as well. I don't want a arbitrary number. I'd like to know exactly what we're trying to improve, how much that would cost, what would be the timeline? Like, again, as, as Commissioner Katz said, as much information as possible, similar to that um, uh, sales tax, penny, penny sales tax um, campaign to make it really clear and transparent to the public.
So, yeah, now I'm looking at the city of West Palm Beach's website where for the, the Parks and Rec Bond that they passed. And it's the, you know, basically it says the park name, estimated cost, improvements, and then district. So that something in that similar, you know, we don't have to uh, go as the school district for every dollar, but they, they generalize it, I think, to the, the thousandth of a dollar or the, the tenth, tenth of thousands of a dollar, ten thousands dollars, so that we get a rough estimate of what the, the cost for the improvement per park would be. And I think, you know, if we look at it, there is a lot more improvements than the bond that I think the taxpayers are comfortable from issuing. So it's something, you know, I would say that I think West Palm Beach did a thirty million dollar bond. Um, I'm thinking somewhere in the range of, you know, ten to twenty.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to recommend, um, I don't, I don't know if the rest of you would be amenable to it, but in addition to staff gathering that data, I would recommend that we have some public input workshops. I want the public to be a part of this process as early on as possible uh, because there may be ideas that we or staff won't think of, uh, but it's out there in the community.
And Mara, just so that I get a clarification, right now, the interest rates are kind of the lowest that they can be.
Interest rates right now are, yeah, pretty decent.
So, so that's the, the only aspect of waiting, is that interest rates could increase. So I don't think it's going to happen before the midterm election, but uh, that's just my uh, appearance. So I think, Jim, do you need a motion to direct staff to move forward with the, the bond? Or just consensus to get some more information to the commission uh, for August or November bond issue?
Going to be one or the other, whichever one the commission prefers.
Yes, so the, the question is, and I'll go back to the school district, for example, the decision between August and November um, is a decision between making sure that it's, it's prominent on the ballot, as Commissioner Romulus said, where there's not going to be thirty different things and constitutional amendments and pages of questions. Hypothetically, it's in August, you kind of display yourself, and it's easy. The reason for considering November is the turnout is always at its highest. So that's the, that's the question. I'm not expressing a preference, but um, whether you do August or November is, is turnout versus prominence on the ballot. So just to throw that out there.
To, to comment on that, it's, the referendum needs to pass with a two-thirds majority, correct?
Two-thirds, no.
What does it need to pass with?
Fifty percent plus one.
Fifty percent. Okay, so whether it's August or November, regardless of turnout, it's still fifty percent. So to that point, Commissioner Katz, it really wouldn't matter what the turnout is, as long as they vote over fifty percent.
Oh, I understand. I, I just mean that more people will be voting in November. Yeah.
John, is Jay Glover unmuted? And I, I just don't know if Jay has heard anything that he wants to comment on or if he's there.
Hello, Mayor, uh, Commission members, this is Jay Glover. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Jay Glover from PFM Financial Advisors, we're the city's financial advisor on debt-related matters. And no, I think y'all are on point with the discussion that's being had, and I don't really have any, uh, you know, additional input. I think it's at your discretion as to when you would want to hold the referendum, and then we could work back from there on the various steps that would be needed. And just so you know, you're generally talking probably uh, you know, six, ninety to a hundred and eighty days following the referendum, if it was approved, before you would be able to issue bonds um, after that. So that's just something else to keep in mind as well, because there's various aspects of getting the bond refer, the, the actual bond issuance prepared after the referendum, including a potential validation process that your legal counsel might recommend that we've discussed. So just keep that in mind as well.
And Mayor, you know, this is going to be something that, as I'm sure Wes Palm did, this isn't something staff's going to drive around, look at the parks and make a list. It's going to be um, hiring a consultant. I would recommend working with your wreck and park board, doing potentially your public input, looking at your master. I would recommend working with your wreck and park board, doing potentially your public input, looking at your master plan. Um, cost estimating, you're you're, it's probably an easy hundred thousand dollar contract with a consultant to get this information prepared. It is not something that staff can pull out in the next thirty days. Um, so I'd like to have an opportunity to to sit and chew on this as as staff and figure out what. All needs to be done and how, but your your wreck and park board should very much be involved in that as well. Um, but. There's a cost associated, no doubt.
Yeah, no, I. Right, because.
Which we're fine with, I just want to be, yeah, it won't be next one.
Can't determine, you know, the cost of things, but they tend to help determine the need.
Priorities, exactly.
Priorities.
Because they do that each year, you know, how they drive, and and they would have some good input, I'm sure.
And so that's what I guess, uh, I would request from the Commission that we move to an August. Uh, ballot for the referendum. And that we, well, we'll see, you know, I know, we know in March isn't enough time, so that's. An extra five months after March. Um, so that's kind of my mentality. And with that, you have a request the the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. To to over the next four months, review each district's parks and locations, determine needs and priorities. So that way, if it's August now, by January, we'll have uh hopefully a citywide. Needs and priority list by our Parks and Rec Advisory Board before we start with um. Uh, different workshops and also notifying the public. In that the when their district is up at the Parks and Rec's uh Advisory Board meetings.
Yeah, like I said, well. We need to to do some research, find out what. Something like that is going to cost to hire to hire someone to facilitate that process for us. And do that cost estimating, the time it's going to take to do the public process and right now, we obviously don't have any funding in the budget identified for this.
I I I.
So we come come back with a report perhaps for you?
I don't think it's. I think we need to know what exactly we want to do first before we hire the consultant so that consultant has a narrow view of what we're requesting.
So we can have the Rec Board perhaps do the their priority review, like you said, by January, bring that back to the Commission to have some discussion.
Yeah.
And then if you say, yeah, this is what we think we want to do, this, da-da-da, go out, work with the consultant to do the.
Basically, you know, February is when we have the timetable, hopefully to hire the consultant. For the the pricing. So that way we have two or three months. They give them the two or three months and then we still have another two or three months to inform the public.
Yeah, what? I I see where you want to go, so let me, and I'll get with Crystal too on back backing up from August, what all these dates look like. And we'll see what we can pull together, you know, certainly bring bring something back.
Needs to to go to November. Then it can go to November, or if we see that there there isn't a public appetite for this. You know, if we, you know, we just see and hear complete knows that they don't want to have this extra tax. Then that's something that we can pull the plug before spending the money on consultant, but I think. Having the the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. To do that sort of aspect, if they were given anywhere from three to five million. What would they do for each of the districts? If that's, I think, what the the consensus of the Commission.
Yes.
That is it? Would anyone like to put anything on future agenda or have a discussion? Not, John, do you mind providing us with the closing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Grant. Uh, as a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the City of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the City of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, we thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Good night, mean adjourned.
Good night, everyone.